Jessica.
Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good morning.
Recording in progress.
Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for March 14, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2023. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. This information for connecting -- the information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting, as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first, and then can provide comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. All right, roll call. Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Shepherd.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, community members are present.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm present.
Thank you. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, here.
Good morning. Mr. Aiken.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I'm here.
Good morning. Thank you. All right, Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The first order of business will be the approval of the hearing minutes.
May I have a motion? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
From the dates of January 19th and January 31st.
All right, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
First, next on the agenda we have--
Oh, we're voting.
Oh, no. Sorry for jumping ahead. All right, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. You again, Mr. Stembridge.
Next on the agenda, we have the extensions at 9:30 a.m. Case number BOA 911272 with an address of 9 Chelsea Street. The applicant or representative is present. I will note that this is the third extension request, which expires on March 29th of this year. If extended, the new expiration date will be March 29th, 2024.
Madam Chair, this is David. I was involved in the community process here, Madam Chair, and members of the board, so I'm going to recuse myself from this, so I'll come back after this case is heard. Thank you.
Mr. Aiken. Okay, is Mr. Lenzon?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Richard Lins with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Madam Chair, this involves an Article 80 project that was approved by this board back in 2021. Although the record does indicate this is our third request for an extension, I believe COVID tolling did apply as part of this original, I'm sorry, 2019, but part of the original approval, so this is technically our second extension. Just real briefly, this does involve a 40,000-square-foot building located in the heart of Maverick Square in East Boston. This would involve retail, commercial, and office space to be constructed. Certainly, COVID played a role in some of the initial delays that we had had. This project has been finalized with the BPDA from a design review standpoint, and we believe that the final items that are remaining involve some licensing issues with the MBTA due to the proximity of the Blue Line Tunnel to this site. We're confident that we can get that completed within the next extension and respectfully requesting an extension through 2024.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lins. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension to March 29th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, case number BOA 1067117. Address of 6 Kelly Court. It's the applicant or representative is present. This is the first extension request. Expired, expiring on April 23rd of this year. If extended, the new expiration date will be April 23rd, 2024.
Thank you. Is Mr. Shahin on? Is anyone from 6 Kelly Court on? Okay, Javier, is the motion to deny without prejudice or to defer?
Uh, that--
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm just trying to answer this, Javier. It could be either one, I recommend to defer for someone for a later date to be heard again.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Is Mr. Aiken back on?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Aiken, yes and yes. Okay, great. The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1033475 with an address of 334-362 Cambridge Street. It's the applicant or representative is present. This will be the second extension request, which will expire on March 13th of this year. If extended, the new expiration date will be March 13th of 2024.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano with the business address of 11 Beacons. Here on behalf of the applicant, just a point to note, I also believe that tolling applied for the first extension. This project, and you can hear me on the next two matters as well, is part of an Article 80 approved large project that involved a phased-in approach to constructing its multiple buildings on different sides of this particular commercial district. It involves over 135 residential units plus commercial space. Due to, one, the pandemic, two, design changes that we were required to make, and then also just financing matters during that period, took a little bit longer. Two of the buildings, just to point out, are already under construction now and finishing up, and so this extension, if granted, would allow us to continue the project to move forward, which we are confident will. We're ready to start on the next phase, so we are requesting a one-year extension.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to grant the extension till March 13th, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Be with me, Madam Chair, please.
It's okay. Looks like we're with Mr. Drago for a while.
Sorry about that, Madam Chair.
And for Mr. Drago, we have case BOA 1033472, the address of 8 to 12 Wilton Street. This is the second extension request, which will expire, which expired on March 13th of this year. If extended, the new expiration date will be March 13th of 2024.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Again, here seeking a one-year extension. As I had mentioned before, this is part of the Alston Square Article 80 project. This is a phased-in project, and we are looking to continue construction, as was previously mentioned, which this would allow if granted.
Correct. May I have an extension? I mean, may I have a motion, sorry?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension to March 13th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1033469 with an address of 20 Braintree Street. This is the second extension request, which expires March 13th of this year. If extended, the new expiration date will be March 13th of 2024.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Tuscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Again, this project, this building, is part of the Alston Square Development Project. It was an Article 80 project. If approved for an extension, this will allow us to continue construction. As I had mentioned, these buildings are already under construction now. Due to design changes and the pandemic, with financing, we were delayed slightly.
All right, thank you, Mr. Drago, and feel free to let us know if these were all companion cases in the future, because the addresses don't necessarily tell us that. May I have a motion?
Make a motion to grant the extension to March 13th, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. -- okay, great. Mr. Stembridge?
I'm not sure. The next two are companion cases.
Yes.
They are, yep.
Yes.
The first one being case BOA 917579 with an address of 349 to 349A Baker Street. Second being case BOA, I'm sorry, the first one is a request for a third extension, which expires on March 15th, 2023, and if extended, the new expiration date will be March 15th of 2024. The next case, next companion case to that is case 917588 with an address of 345 to 345B Baker Street, and that one is-- would be the same. Having expired on March 15th, extension having expired on March 15th of this year, and the request is to extend to a new expiration date of March 15th of 2024.
Great, Mr. Pugini?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of the applicant, business address 10 Floyd Road in Braintree. This is kind of unique. This, the applicant had purchased this property off of the developer who got it permitted. They closed in June, however, it took him till September to get the architectural drawings from the architect. It went through a six-month design review with the BPDA, and they're just finishing up their plans. They should hope to have their permit by May, but we just kind of ran out of time. So, you know, if you want to do six months or a year, it's fine, but we don't need that much more time.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to grant the extension until March 14, 2024.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next off of us, we have case BOA 659702, the address of 86 to 88 North Washington Street. If the applicant is present or represented for them, this is the third extension request, which will expire on May 4th of 20 of this year, and the request is to extend the expiration date to May 4th of 2024.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dennis Quilty, attorney for the project proponent. We are before you, having made changes to this project over the time that it's been before you. Of course, we dealt with COVID tolling throughout the process. This is a very narrow, difficult site in the middle of North Washington Street downtown. The site configuration made the original plans financially infeasible, unfortunately, as we went through COVID delays, et cetera. Resulted in a reduction in size of this building from 12 to eight stories, and it's a small boutique hotel, which will now have 42 rooms. We have been spending our time well, working with the Department of Public Works, the BPDA, on, you know, the reduction in scope, if you will. As we sit here this morning, we have been approved for a street lighting plan by DPW, plan to file our construction management plan within the next two weeks. Have already filed with the Public Improvement Commission for vertical discontinuances, so we are working well to get this project going. Might not need the full time, but we would ask you for one more extension so we can complete this project and move it forward. We appreciate it. Go ahead.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion to grant this extension until May 4th, 2024.
Thank you. May I have a second? Second. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have 934 Final Opera Case, and that would be case BZC32279, address of 315 to 319 West Broadway. Is there an -- is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, here.
Okay, let's hear, let's hear from you.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Saman Ambolsi of Rose Law Partners, and I'm here today on behalf of Bromfield Development, and who's the applicant for the project, original applicant for the project. And with me here today as well is Tim Johnson, who I believe is a panelist and is available, who's the project architect. Thanks very much for having us today. And also for the record, my business address is 1 Beacon Street, 23rd floor, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108.
Looks like we're having difficulty getting your slides. Do you want to proceed?
I can go through what I have in front of me, at least on my notes, and hopefully the board's had an opportunity to review those. If it's also helpful, I'm happy to pull up what we sent on my end and share my screen and differ from you, Madam Chair, on what you'd like me to do.
Yeah, I don't think we have the sharing capacity, but Javier, is there an issue with him proceeding?
No, Madam Chair, I don't believe so.
Okay. Excellent, I would just move forward.
Sure. So, this matter was set up for a BFA hearing following a request that we made in October 17, 2022, and the request, I'll first frame it, and then I'll talk a little bit about the background, which is important to the hearing here today. This request was made in October 17, 2022, essentially to seek the board's confirmation that a reduced version of the project can proceed under the existing zoning relief. That request sounds straightforward. It gets a little confusing when I tell you the date of the existing zoning relief, which was 2015. So I want to spend a little bit of time going through a chronology, which was shared with the board, and I'll just try to recite it here, and if it's helpful to put it up visually, we can, let me know, and we can take a pause to try to do that. But the project was originally filed back in 2013 for a 14-unit development at 315 319 West Broadway in South Boston. It's a mixed-use, commercial on the first floor, fitness center and office space, and then there were 12, sorry, 14 residences proposed above. Shortly thereafter, in 2013, a case was filed, an appeals filed by an immediate abutor to the Massachusetts Superior Court, and that kind of instituted the first case, so to speak, involving the project. Before that case got underway, there was an agreement not to, not as to a project that would be acceptable to the abutor, but there was a, oh, perfect, I see that the slides are, if we can go to the second page, I'm just walking through the chronology here. You'll see that in 2014, the project proponent and the abutor agreed to essentially go back to the board, either to propose a reduced plan or to get a more detailed, robust decision from the zoning board. When my client filed again in 2014, after that agreed-upon remand from the Superior Court, they filed a reduced project, and it was actually a 12-unit project revised development, 12 residential units, still maintaining the first-floor commercial uses. And on January 6, 2015, this board issued its second zoning relief involving the project, granting the necessary variances for the 12-unit project to proceed. Then came, and I won't go into the details, a significant amount of litigation involving the second relief that started in the Superior Court. Case was dismissed, went up all the way to the Massachusetts Appeals Court, came back to the Superior Court for further discovery around the 2015 zoning relief. In September of 2022, I'm pleased to report that we came, reached a settlement agreement, I won't go into the details of it, but we reached a settlement agreement with the immediate abutor, and that settlement agreement resulted in a further reduced proposal, which is a nine-unit addition, a nine-unit residential addition above a first-floor existing building, which is there now. Still mixed, mixed-use, commercial on the first floor, and then nine units above. In October 17, 2022, which is how we got here, we filed a request for this board final arbiter hearing, essentially to confirm that the reduced project, which does not require any further zoning relief, does not increase the degree of nonconformance with any of the existing zoning violations, can proceed under that existing 2015 relief. The goal being that if we get the approval, that carries out the settlement agreement, and then the case can be resolved, settled, and dismissed as to the developer and the zoning board of appeals. Next slide. So what I'm showing you here on the slide is the 12-unit project that was proposed back in 2015, and I'm largely just showing this just for your own visual. If we can go to the next slide, please? Here is what's being proposed now. As you can see, it's a reduction in the number of units. As a result of that, there's a reduction in the gross square, livable gross square footage at the site, but everything else doesn't really change with respect to the other zoning relief that was granted. If we can go to the next slide, I'll go into a little bit detail about what is the kind of zoning implications of the new project. The slide I'm showing you here is a zoning comparison between the 12-unit project that was approved by the board in 2015 and the proposed nine-unit project for which we're seeking confirmation can proceed under the 2015 relief. I want to call out a few specific areas here. You know, first, you'll note at the very top, we're going from a 12-unit to a nine-unit residential addition. That's going to result in a reduction of the total gross square footage of living area from 12,779 square feet to 11,350 square feet. That doesn't change the fact that we would have needed to get variances from the minimum lot size and lot area for each additional unit requirement, but what I will note is that the degree of nonconformance, of course, is reduced because the gross square footage of the project is reduced. You'll also see that the FAR is reduced from 3.4 under the original plan down to 2.9 for the new nine-unit project. That's important because under the 2015 relief, the zoning relief was, did allow a variance from the 1.0 FAR threshold up to 3.4, so the new FAR certainly fits within that. The final thing I'll say is that, under the 2015 relief, the project did obtain zoning relief from the parking requirements. At the time, under the applicable zoning code requirement for this project, for projects that had 10 or more units, it required 1.5 parking spaces per unit, which, you know, roughly came out to 18 parking spaces. The project proposed 12. Because we're reducing the number of units down to nine, under that requirement, for four to nine units, it required 1.25 spaces per unit, which is a requirement of 11 parking spaces. We're proposing 12, so actually, no, no, that relief isn't even required anymore.
Thank you. Thank, thank you. I think, I think we get the idea. Are there any questions from the board? All right, I hear no questions. Javier, do, do we, do we need public testimony on these BFAs?
You can request it. I, as it's a BFA, I don't think it's necessary since it's the minimum.
I, I agree, just checking. With that, may I have a motion? I need a motion.
We're making a motion to, I'll make a motion to approve. I just want to make sure that's appropriate for the board final arbiter cases.
Yes. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have two groundwater conservation overlay district cases for nine thirty. The first is case BOA one-four-three-two-four-one-three with an address of thirty-six Cottage Street. Is the applicant or representative present?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago Tiscano, with the business address of eleven Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant, Welte Capalo. This project at thirty-six Cottage Street was strictly a renovation project. We're not changing any of the underlying zoning. We're changing any of the contours of the building. Because this falls in a G-Cod district due to the extent of the rehab, we were triggered for G-Cod. We did submit both our no-harm letter and signed Boston Water and Sewer Plans to Mr. Seminelli. And I can answer any questions that the board may have.
Great. Is Mr. Seminelli on?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both letters from the applicant.
All right, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case is BOA one-four-two-two-seven-zero-one, an address of three-seventy-four Commonwealth Avenue. The applicant and/or representative present?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Thomas Miller, business address is twenty-eighth State Street, Boston, on behalf of the applicant. As stated in the application materials, this is Harvard Club's application to convert their existing front yard area on private property into a patio space for dining of the club members. Plans have been reviewed and stamped by Boston Water and Sewer and submitted to the groundwater trust for their review as well. And we received their letter. We're happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Mr. Seminelli?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both letters from the applicant.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion?
And make a motion to approve?
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to the hearings for nine thirty-eight AM. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals at this point for any of these cases?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, eight-dash-ten Merce, I'm sorry, wrong address. Forty-eight Ellery Street, please.
Top of page three, Mr. Stenbridge. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Just need to read it into the record.
So case number BOA one-four-two-three-zero-three-two with an address of forty-eight Ellery Street is being deferred.
Mr. Marancy? Mr. Marancy, do you want to just?
Yes, I'm sorry. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with a business address in three fifty West Broadway in South Boston, requesting a deferral on forty-eight Ellery Street. The reason is that we must engage in conversations with the mayor's office of housing and the BPDA with respect to the affordable unit contribution of this project.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, before I do that, the next available date would be May ninth for a deferral.
Okay. Any concerns with that, Mr. Marancy?
No, I understand the board's schedule, and the actor will need to take whatever's available. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
And make a motion to defer at this time till May ninth?
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Given the other requests, move on to case BOA one-four-two-eight-four-four-seven, address of forty-one ninety-eight through forty-two oh-six Washington Street. Is the applicant or representative available?
Yes, we are.
Okay, before you start, I just want to remind our members that this is an Article eighty BPDA-approved project with thirteen out of thirty-one units that are IDP units. And for the architects and the lawyers, I will just ask you to briefly describe the project and focus on relief sought. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Johanna Schneider. I'm at Emma Lamb Barnes, with the business address of seventy-five State Street here in Boston. I'm here with ARX Urban, the developer. And with me on the line is Benji Mall, one of the principals of ARX Urban. The project that we're presenting today represents the culmination of more than five years of community process as the ARX Urban team seeks to bring a predominantly affordable housing development to a location with fantastic access to public transportation. I'm going to give just a little tiny bit of background for those board members who are not familiar with the project. Since 2018, we've had more than thirty meetings with elected officials, community groups and neighbors, and six public meetings, including one just last week. This is an unprecedented amount of process for an Article eighty small project review process. But as a result of that extensive outreach, we do have one-hundred-and-thirty-nine letters of support, which have been provided to the board. The project was, as the chair mentioned, unanimously approved by the BPDA board in June of 2021. But in November of 2021, a prior iteration of this board voted against granting it the necessary zoning relief. At that hearing, the board's greatest articulated concern appeared to be that the project did not provide adequate parking for the residential use. Since that time, as the board is aware, the zoning code has changed to eliminate minimum parking requirements for projects with significant affordability. And the city's focus on the delivery of affordable housing has increased considerably. So we're now back before the board, once again asking for approval for this worthwhile project, which really does align perfectly with the mayor's housing production goals. The project proposes to replace an existing seventy-nine-hundred-square-foot one-story retail building with an approximately thirty-one thousand seven-hundred-twenty-five-square-foot mixed-use project. The project has thirty-one residential units. Sixty-one percent of the units, or nineteen of the units, will be income-restricted at or below seventy percent of AMI. And we have been in discussions with the mayor's office of housing about potential financing for this project. The project is also going to provide sixty-five hundred square feet of ground for retail, which will be purpose-built so that the two longstanding local businesses who currently lease space at the site can stay there. One of those businesses is the Rosy Square Theater. That's a woman and minority-owned local business. And the other is Cooley Yogurt, a minority-owned local business. I think it's important to note for the board that rents of these two retail spaces will continue at their existing below-market rates. In terms of unit mix, we're going to have eleven studios, fourteen one-bedrooms, three two-bedrooms and three three-bedrooms. The studios will have an average size of five-hundred-and-fifteen square feet. The one-bed will be of an average size of six-hundred-and-fifteen square feet. The two beds will each be seven-hundred-and-ninety-five square feet. And the three beds are each about eleven hundred square feet. In order to provide best affordability and the subsidized ground-floor retail space for these neighborhood businesses, the trade-off is that the project will only be providing one parking space on-site. And this is going to be an easy car-share space for tenants of the building. We think that this is appropriate, given the unique nature of the project with its very high percentage of affordability and its proximity to public transit, including the Washington Street bus lane and the Rosendale Village MBTA commuter rail station. We are planning for a robust TDM plan, which will include a transit subsidy for residents and that easy car-share space I mentioned. There will also be thirty-eight bicycle parking spaces on-site. And the proponent is committed to securing between twelve and twenty subsidized off-site spaces from local private property owners within a half-mile radius of the project. I'm going to briefly turn it over to Benji Mall to walk through a couple of project plans, just to give the board kind of a visual, visual of what we're talking about. Benji, are you on the line?
I'm here. Thank you so much for, for the introduction. As you can see here, the site is at the corner of the facility and Washington Street, across from Adams Park in Rosendale Village and right down the street from the commuter rail. It's also on the high-speed bus lane that takes folks from Rosendale to the Forest Hills T Station. Next slide, please. So here you can see the existing improvements. Currently, it's a one-story building that was built in the twenties. You can see right next door is the Rosendale Community Center. And we spent quite a bit of time figuring out how to acknowledge, from an architectural standpoint, this neighboring building. So next slide, please. And so in, in thinking through our architecture, which we, we did over a few years here, the design was really sought to acknowledge the, the architectural features of the community building next door as well as appear from the street to be lower than.
Mr. Mall, I'm going to ask you to speed through the architecture piece because I think the questions relate more to parking than architecture.
Sure, sure. That, that's fine. So I guess next slide, you can keep going through the next slides, and then we can. We're happy to, to talk about parking. Here's the ground floor floor plan, the existing retail, the below, the below, below-grade theater space as well on the right, and basement plan, and then here are the unit layouts.
Where is, where is your loading, loading or unloading area? Is it on Washington?
Yeah, if you go back to the ground floor plan, scroll back up. There are two, there are two spaces here. One is a, a loading space for the commercial businesses and tenants. And then one is a parking space for a shared electric vehicle. We're currently working with the city of Boston to have an additional loading space on Vicilli Street. We understand that traffic is a concern, given the summer school next door. So we are working for, we are working with, with the city to provide for that loading space at appropriate times, as well as space on Washington Street for loading into the building. But I would like to make note that the existing retail space today has the exact same amount of parking in there. Two spaces to currently service the current retail space. So from a commercial standpoint, in our mind, nothing is particularly changing here from the current improvements of the site. And we are making a strong push here to prioritize affordable housing and supporting local businesses over parking. And it's something that our, from ARX Urban is very proud of across the city of Boston, our, our track record on thinking about transit from a progressive standpoint. So if you go to the last slide of the presentation, we can talk a little bit more about the transit and how, yep. One, slide, one more slide up, actually, sorry. So one of the things that we're thinking about, that, that we are doing on other projects that we would anticipate doing here is providing a monthly stipend to subsidize the subway and, and bus and commuter rail usage, as well as having thirty-eight bicycle parking spaces on-site. We plan to, if demand necessitates, provide up to twenty off-site parking spaces subsidized within a half-mile radius, and then have an electric vehicle car-share on-site as well. We are strong believers in transit-oriented walkable locations in that there are numerous people that would like to live a car-free lifestyle.
Thank you. That's helpful. And, and you just, you mentioned that the, the current businesses already had those parking and loading. Were they in the same, on the same street?
It's, it's in the exact same location.
Okay, thank you. Katie, have you reviewed the plans?
I have reviewed the plans, and they're adequate.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to ask about the businesses. I'm very glad to hear that businesses will come back to the building. I think that is good for the community. But what is the plan for the businesses during construction? What is going to happen with those businesses in the meantime?
Yeah, that's a great point. This is going to be an affordable housing project subsidized by both tax credits likely and, and by the city. So there are specific requirements in place for relocation that we will abide by. So tenants will have the optionality to relocate permanently. For some of the tenants, there are four tenants currently. The two tenants that will relocate temporarily, we've, we will work with them on, on finding a temporary relocation for the eighteen months of construction until they're able to move back. Then the two other tenants will have the option to relocate elsewhere in the square and receive subsidy from the project to do so. So something that we are certainly will work through with the existing tenants. It's not an easy process, but it's something that we're strong believers in to make sure that we're able to support these local businesses over the long term.
Thank you. And, and again, can you repeat how many income-restricted units are you proposing at this moment?
So it's, it's nineteen of thirty-one, which I believe is sixty-one percent. So these are all below seventy percent of AMI. And we're still working on the subsidy, the subsidy capital staff to determine the exact unit mix, but sixty-one percent below seventy percent of AMI at the very least. So we're very, we're very excited about that prospect. Thank you.
And that number went up, is that correct?
Yes, that number went up. So under, the, the project was originally being permitted under the inclusionary development policy. It was previously approved under Article eighty at forty percent affordability. So we're, we're thrilled to be able to increase that to over sixty percent based on our conversations with subsidy providers over the past eighteen months.
So it's going from thirteen to nineteen units, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Good, good morning, Benji. Couple of questions. One, I guess, and I did a site visit over here over the weekend, too, and have obviously been to Rosendale Village many times. You have lots of, lots of ground floor commercial, busy, busy retail, residential, commercial district. If you had to comply with sort of underlying zoning requirements for parking, what, what do you think would have had to change for this? Would you have had to try to finance a garage? Would you have had to eliminate some of the ground floor uses that are proposed here? What, what would have been sort of the alternate there?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, that, that's a, that's a great question. I think we, we understand that all development has, has trade-offs, and we were very conscious here in the trade-off. If we were to have to provide the requisite amount of parking, there's no way that we would have been able to support the Rosy Square Theater as well as one or two of the other local businesses that will likely be here. And the retail component of the project will be very, very small. So we made that very conscious trade-off to eliminate parking and to provide for additional commercial space here.
Okay, thank you for answering that. And then the, the second thing is, could you just explain a little bit the off-site parking piece, especially with the subsidized housing component of it? How do you see that working? Are you going to be leasing spaces on behalf of residents? Are you just trying to pair them up with it? And are you doing that just? What's the, what's the driving factor of you trying to, to arrange that?
Yeah, I think the driving factor candidly was, was neighborhood concerns and other projects across the city. We, we have been successful in decoupling parking, parking costs from housing and really trying to incentivize. We have been successful in decoupling parking costs from housing and really trying to incentivize car free, free living. So while we anticipate that the majority of tenants here, it's going to be a self-selected group will live here that want to live a car free lifestyle. We will have the opportunity to provide up to 20 parking spaces. We had two lots where we were able to rent off street spaces. You know, yes.
That's fine.
From an affordable housing standpoint, the question is really on timing. One of the lots that we had arranged for in 2019, something has changed in that lot from, from the time that we started the prospect. So we have basically sought to arrange up to 20 spaces for tenants as demand necessitates.
And that's only for residential, not for the commercial, not for the theater or commercial uses?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Madam Chair, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? All right, with that, I'll open it up to public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant, this has been through an extensive BPDA community led process. And also I see Quinn on here from the BPDA.
Conor Waltsford. Oh, yes, I'll call on him for more details on that. Thank you.
Perfect, just want to reference him. We've received a range of comments. We've received refusal letter, opposition letters from the Rosendale Coalition, as well as some of the budding businesses citing height, parking and the proximity to the Sumner School across the street with concerns about pickup and drop off. We've also received a lot of letters of support from organizations such as Walk Up Rosendale, Rosendale Village Main Streets, and Rosendale is for everyone, also known as Rise, as well as other business owners in the area citing the deep affordability of units for this project, community space that will be made available for the theater, as well as activation on the ground level with businesses. I believe we've received close to 80 something letters of support. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Can I, can I ask, can I invite Quinn to say a few words just to confirm and clarify the Article 8 process?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Quinn Balzich, Project Manager with the Boston Planning and Development Agency. The proposed 4198 to 4206 Washington Street project is undergone thorough review by the BPDA, which culminated in the unanimous vote of approval from our Board of Directors on June 10, 2021. The BPDA is pleased to offer our support this morning for this project, which constitutes significant commitment to the creation of affordable housing, provides investment support to existing local businesses on the site, and offers the unique opportunity for a truly transit oriented development. Since BPDA board approval and the last time this project appeared in front of this board, the proponent has increased its commitment to affordable housing from 42 to 61%, increasing the contribution of affordable housing units from 13 to 19, as has been discussed. The project has facilitated a robust community engagement process, which included an extended public comment period of approximately seven months and a half dozen formal and informal engagements with the project neighbors in the Rosendale community. Additionally, after informing the BPDA of the increase to affordability, the proponent agreed to host an additional community meeting in response to the updated affordability commitment. This project will appear in front of the BPDA board on Thursday of this week for an administrative vote to ensure that their project is monitored correctly, given the increased affordable housing commitment. All other aspects of the project remain as approved by our board in 2021. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have in the process if there are any.
Thank you. Madam Ambassador?
Yep, I'm opening for the Council of Royals office. Sorry, sent a request to unmute you. Go ahead, can you hear it?
Yes, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan from Councilor Ricardo Royals office want to speak in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. And then those who are in support, if you mind just raising your hand. If you're not in support, just lower your hand. So we'll go to support first and then opposition. So I will start with Steve. Steve, can you state your name and address for the record, please, and be brief?
Sir, Steve Gag. I live at 631 South Street in Rosendale. And I am in favor of this project and have been for a few years now. I was the, I was on the board of Rosendale Village Main Street for over 15 years and was in leadership, either as president or vice president for most of that time. The biggest issue I heard from most of our business owners, and still is the case, is foot traffic. And this is exactly the kind of project we want to see in the business district is to increase the number of people who actually are going to be shopping there. Second issue I would address, and that's my final issue, is parking. We have a lot of parking. We've had a BTD study that was done recently. There's a lot of parking in our neighborhood in the business district. We have two MBTA lots, but we have also have a free municipal lot that is very close to this site. And a lot of people think we have a parking problem and we don't have one. So for those two reasons, I think this is a great project and should be approved. Thank you.
Yep. Governor Mary, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Give new information.
Hi, it's Mary Moniz.
Uh huh, go ahead.
I'm a part of the project, but I am an opponent. So perhaps I should wait.
Oh, okay. We have you on, we'll just hear you. Yep.
I oppose this development, 31 unit development, I might add, at 4198 Washington Street. I agree with the zoning board, which two times cited violations that this building is too tall and too dense. And today I'm really focused on the impact, the negative impact to Basili Street. The building is next to the child summer school. The proposed building goes right to the property line of the city property. The developer is planning a delivery driveway next to the school land. The driveway will require delivery, trash pickup and other vehicles to drive into the driveway and then back out onto Basili Street near the corner of Washington Street.
Thank you. Okay, Elizabeth, are you looking to give support or testimony here?
Yes, I'm Elizabeth Feig.
Yep, can you state your address as well and just give us brief testimony?
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Feig. I live at 51 Selwyn Street in Rosendale. I'm a resident and active member of the community for over seven years and I strongly support this development project. This will address the urgent Boston housing crisis, enhance Rosendale's culture and entertainment opportunities, and really is in line with the goals and vision that community members have for Rosendale, which is a more versatile, diverse urban and active city. The parking concerns expressed by a vocal minority surrounding this project are unfounded, unethical and illogical. We really must prioritize people over parking and facts over fiction. The majority of Rosendale residents and stakeholders are thrilled with this project. We couldn't be more supportive.
Thank you.
And we really.
And then Ben, are you looking to give support here?
Yes, I'm calling, I'm going to support. My name is Ben Bruno. I'm at 27 Colgate Road. I'm, I deeply support this project. I voted for Michelle Wu largely because of the positions on housing. And she was elected by a large margin. The very next day, the ZBDA at that time denied via a four out of seven vote in favor. So that was gutting the day after that happened.
Can we focus on why you support this project? Thank you.
Yes, I support this project because it is, it is walking the walkabout building affordable housing in all of our communities. So, you know, I don't agree with comments saying, you know, that's, this is a nice idea, but not here. I think we have to do it everywhere. And as a Rosendale person, I think this is a fantastic project and we should do it right here. Thank you very much.
Yep, and Minor?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor is representing funders of Union Carpenter's Little Ward to the city of Boston. We want to go and request support of this project. Thank you.
And we're taking people in opposition now. So if you're opposed to the project, can you just raise your hand? Michael, and then Karen. Hi, Michael, can you, once you're muted, can you state your name and address for the record and give us brief testimony as if you're in opposition?
Yes, I'm Michael Moniz. I'm in Abutter. I live on Lindell Street, which is the adjacent block. And this project has numerous violations, as some of which were mentioned earlier with the density and the no parking. I understand the no parking is allowed now because of the affordability of the units, but we have to, and you know, there are existing businesses with parking issues already. But we have to realize there's going to be 31 residences now. And those people, if they don't have cars, are going to have significant number of deliveries. All those deliveries, grocery vehicles, Amazon, FedEx, Ubers, Lifts, meal deliveries and so forth, will take place on Basili Street because of the fact that there's very little parking on Washington Street. All that traffic then has to go through our neighborhood. Most of the support from within Rosendale for this project is coming from people not in this neighborhood. People who think there are no parking issues need to come here during the day to see what is happening and what would be made worse by all these trucks speeding, because they do speed once they make their deliveries through streets.
Chair, I think we've sorted it out.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. We understand your concern. Next.
Okay, and I see Mary's on.
She already spoke, yes. And I think Council Murphy, I don't know if she's trying to speak on this, but she.
Thank you. Council Murphy, looking to give testimony here?
This is Karen Payne. I think I just got the sign to unmute. Is that okay? Can we speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I'm in, I'm in Abutter. I live at 22 Murray Hill Road. I've been here for over 40 years. And it's always been a problem with parking here. And I'm not an opponent to affordable housing. One, I think that what we're calling affordable housing in this project is not affordable for the people that live in Rosendale that would like to move up. And I think that we need to take that into consideration. The parking is an issue. And I think that folks that make comments that not here in my backyard, I resent that comment because I, for one, would love to see more people that live in Rosendale, live in Archdale, be able to move into this building. Thank you very much.
No additional raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Any, would the applicant like to respond to the issue around parking?
I think that the one thing, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to respond. I think the one thing that we do want to emphasize is that, as was noted earlier, this site currently houses these local retail businesses and we are not making any changes whatsoever to the access of the parking or the loading. And also, as Benji mentioned, we are in discussions with BTD about finding suitable locations for drop off zones for deliveries. Basili Street is one option. Another option is right in front of the building on Washington Street. There is only a two hour time period where that's a dedicated bus lane. So we do think that there are opportunities right in front of the building on Washington for an alternative delivery drop off location.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair. I really like that the project is providing enough income restricted units for a private project that the merchants can come back to the building. And for that reason, I make a motion to approve the project with a BPDA review.
Thank you. May I have a second? Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, I'm happy to support this. I think it's a good location for the mix of uses. On Washington Street, there's already many commercial uses and I think it'll fit in nicely.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to just make a couple of notes that I think that there are, you know, special circumstances here at this lot. They're able to retain some of the businesses and to mesh the historical zoning of the area there, which had made it so that there's so much ground level and street front commercial use there, which under, you know, current zoning may not necessarily have been, been able to be done to meet parking requirements. So that this relief that's being granted does, does allow that. And that, you know, it is, would be a hardship to not be able to build something like this that would fit in there. So, you know, I give it a thumbs up and a yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next case is BOA 1404217 with an address of 302 Fuller Street. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Ms. Campbell? Is the applicant for 302 Fuller Street on?
They were on earlier.
Yes, no, I thought I heard them as well.
Okay, let me just have her. Box of sale, I'm making you a panelist again. And once you accept the panelist designation, you can unmute yourself. I know your contractor was supposed to be on as well. So can you hear us? Yeah, you might be muted if you're trying to speak. Okay, she is on.
We know she's on, but should we move on and circle back to her then?
It doesn't make sense. Okay.
I'm here, I'm here. Hear me? Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
302 Fuller Street.
Thank you. Yep, can you present your case? Thank you.
Yes, so if granted, I would like to take down the existing wall between the kitchen and the bedroom and to extend it into a wider space. The bedroom was moved in regards to my dad, what needed more space for, for the original living room. And we won't be going to the side for anything at all. I mean, it's just, just the wall between the porch and the room will be taken down also. The porch will be closed in and then a deck built to the back. So we're not, we're not be going to the side. But the contractor, David McDonald, is on, so he can elaborate more on, I mean, measurements and all that, which he understands more than I do, so.
Can you, can you confirm that the work is strictly internal to the product, to the property?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Ms. Weewell, have you reviewed the plans?
I have and they are adequate.
Any questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you so much. You guys have a blessed day.
At this time, we will ask, since the date of 10:30, we'll ask to get any deferrals or withdrawals from the 10:30 timeframe?
166 Chelsea Street.
So we have a deferral for case BOA 1406267 with the address of 162 Chelsea Street.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a short deferral if possible, akin to our attention that the plan's examiner missed a violation. And so at Inspection Services Department, so this has to be read advertised. So wanting assistance from that deferral would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solis, do you have a date?
Yes, Madam Chair, May 9 would be the next available date.
Great. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer to May 9, 2023.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken? Mr. Aiken, are you on mute? Okay, I don't know what happened to Mr. Aiken, so the chair will vote yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Secretary, 184 Cowper Street, please, Ward one.
That would be case BOA 1432527 with an address of 184 Cowper Street. The applicant or representative?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, Richard Lynn's business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner in this matter, also requesting a brief deferral. We are finalizing some details with the budding property owners relative to this project. We believe we have worked out the final remaining issues that they've expressed some concern over. We believe a deferral will be in the best interest of the project for all involved. We believe a deferral will be in the best interest of the project for all involved, so we're requesting a brief deferral if possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solis, do you have a date?
Yes, Madam Chair, May 9th is still early, apparently.
That's piling up, Mr. Solis.
We're currently at 3. This will be the 4th.
All right. With that, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to May 9th.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken? Okay, I don't know, someone may want to check if he's having audio...
Madam Chair, this is Javier. I believe Mr. Aiken might have had a step out. I believe his child was sick.
Okay, all right. Well, that's helpful to know. So, the chair, chair votes yes. Motion carries.
I believe Mr. Aiken is...
You believe he's back? Oh, okay. Mr. Aiken?
All right, got some internet problems over in East Boston. This is, this was a deferral?
Yes, we're just voting. So, Mr. Aiken?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. Did the chair vote it yes, so the motion carries? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Secretary, I have two deferrals. First one being 185 E Street, South Boston.
Is this for 10:30, Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
That would be case BOA 1406531 with the address of 185 E Street. And the applicant or their representative?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adam Severancey, with the business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're here seeking a deferral today to allow these plans to be re-advertized. The unit count has dropped down to these plans. Still need a little bit more time to re-advertize and reflect the new plans.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Solis, do you have a date?
Yes, this will be the final one for May 9th, because it would be at 5.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
The second one is 599 East Fifth Street.
That one, case BOA 1404304, the address of 5992601 Vista.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adam Severancey, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. We're here seeking a deferral to further the community process.
Thank you. Mr. Solis, do you have a date?
Yes, Madam Chair, it would be May 23rd.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to May 23rd.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
All right, I guess, are we back to 120 Boden?
That's where we're heading to.
Okay, very good.
Which is case BOA 1414980, the address of 12043, which is also an Article 80, gone throughout the Article 80 process. The applicant or their representative present?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good morning to you all. This is Mike Ross, attorney for the law firm of Prince Lobel, business address of one international place. I'm here with the architect, Beth McDougall, as well as Andre Porter from the team, and our applicant, Solomon Chaduri, who is a local resident of Boston. What I, what we have here for you today is, as the secretary mentioned, an Article 80, small project review filing. It was approved by the BPDA board on October 13th, 2022. It's currently an approximate 10,000-square-foot vacant parcel at the corner of Boden and Geneva Streets. It has an extreme slope that goes towards the back of the property into the hill, where there are several other parcels, I'll show you in a bit. What we're proposing here is a 38-unit mixed-use property with ground floor retail, nine parking spaces, and 42 bicycle spaces. It's a five-story building. If we go to the next slide, I can give you a little more detail. So, also, and I just also want to point out, there's a private road that runs along the side there on the right that's called Cedar Ave. And so, that's private, and that will be how we access the nine parking spaces. It's also convenient for loading and pickup of trash, et cetera. And what you see here is the ground floor retail at 1,600 square feet. The ground floor retail will be subsidized. It will be, it'll have a $500 subsidy that it carries every month as part of the development itself. So, that will allow for access to more retailers from the immediate area. I think that's good. I'll go to slide two, if I could, or the next slide, rather. So, what we have is we're going to start to kind of build the floor plans from the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth floors. So, I can, you can kind of just go through that, and I just want to tell you what the unit mix is as, Madam Ambassador, you slide through three and three through seven slowly. So, we have one studio in this project. It's a 522-square-foot studio. There are 16 one-bedrooms that range between 636 and 838 square feet. And then, there are five one-bedrooms that also have an office. So, it's a one-bedroom plus, if you will, and those range from 830 to 943. There are nine two-bedrooms in the project, and then, and they range from 851 to 955. And there are three, there are seven, seven three-bedrooms, seven three-bedrooms in this project, 1,000 to 1,156.
How many are IDP units?
There are seven IDP units in this project, so that's about 18 and 1/2%. And as you might notice, on the fourth and fifth floor, there's a step back, and I'll show you in the elevation, it'll be a lot easier to show you. But there's also balconies on almost all the units. You'll see on this slide here is our roof plan, where there are photovoltaic solar panels and mechanicals on that roof plan. The next slide will show you an elevation, and this is good to kind of show you that setback I was referring to. This is your front elevation. The next slide, I'll show you the side elevation. Want to point out just here a couple of things. So, here on this side, you can see how the building itself is kind of built into the hillside there. So, that ground floor is actually, according to zoning, is considered a basement, because it's covered by more than 35% ground cover. So, really, what we have is a basement on top of, I'm sorry, five floors on top of that basement, just because of the terrain that surrounds it. But this will, at this portion of the side, that's where we'll be cut back a bit, and you'll have access to those nine parking spaces on the garage. And that, what you're looking at there is that Cedar Ave street that I mentioned earlier. We can go to the next slide, and I'll point out, this is just looking at it from the rear. You know, there's plenty of balconies and outdoor space there. There's also, on the second floor right there, or the first floor, rather, there's a door there. That door just leads out to an amenity for the residents, so that they also have access to outdoor space, like a common, a common deck, that I'll show you a little bit more in a second. I think we have a couple of renderings now, just to show you.
Yeah, I think if you could talk about the violations as you're going, that would be helpful.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, so I can, I can cut right through the violations. Well, let me, let me, I'll quickly, we only have a few more slides here, Madam Chair, and I'll go straight to the violations, just to give you a sense of what, what it's going to look like when built, a rendering here. We can go through the next one. That's from the corner again, that Cedar Ave up along the side. Next slide, please. This is from, from that rear view that I referenced earlier. Next slide, please. And this is from the other side. Again, you can see that land coming up. And next slide, please. Just quickly show you, just, these are the parcels I referenced. Boston Edison Parcels behind us, and there's the City of Boston Park up on the, kind of the top there, at the top of the hill, called Geneva Cliffs. The Cedar Ave will actually provide access. What we're going to plan to do on the next slide is, we'll be building in a sidewalk that you can show here. Oh, well, those are existing conditions. So, it's a vacant site, it's a vacant lot, there's nothing there right now, just trees. We're going to remove 14 trees, but place 22 new trees, so a net increase in trees on the site. You can go to the next slide. Next slide, please. And there you'll see that sidewalk that we're creating, kind of access up to the park itself. You're seeing three new street trees on this slide here and lots of plantings. That's that residential area in the back that I referenced. And the next slide, if you could. This just shows you a section, it shows you that topography, how we are built into the hill and the five floors. Next slide, please. Yeah, and that's just some detailing. So, Madam Chair, you asked about the violations. So, we have parking, you know, this is, they want 1.5 for each of the units. This has nine, nine total parking spaces. One of those parking spaces will be a shared car. It was part of the agreement with the BPDA, so there will be a lot of people using that shared car. We recited also for off-street loading, although Cedar Ave will make an excellent loading area. There's no internal, you know, capital L, loading bay in the building. The use itself of multi-family residential is actually conditional in the local, local convenience sub-district here in the Dorchester neighborhood, sub-district. There are some dimensional reg, some dimensional variances. The FAR here, it would be, otherwise be a 1.0 according to zoning. We're just over 4. The building height, we are, it calls for 40. This, the building's height from the first to the top floor is 54 and 1/2 feet off the back. If you counted it from the front, which zoning wouldn't, but just so you know, it's 66 and 9 inches. The rear yard would normally call for 20. We're just at 10 at the, at the narrowest corner, actually 9 and 9 inches, and then I think about 14 at the, at the farthest corner. Opens, I think we almost, I think we have the open space, but we were cited for open space. It's close, 1,900. We're very close to that number. And those were the violations that we were cited. I'll pause there, Madam Chair, for any questions or comments.
Thank you. And I have to say, I've actually been to that site myself and prior to this and walked up that Geneva Cliff, so it's great to see, it's great to see this coming to life and livening up the area. Any questions from the board? All right.
Yes, quick, quick, quick question, Madam Chair. Has this undergone Parks Department review yet, or will that come, will that come later? I know that there's an agreement to make a contribution.
Yeah, there's an agreement to make a contribution. I think they participated in one or two of our meetings, but the form that we got to get signed, I don't think, they usually like that at the end of the process, after zoning, after BPDA, so that actual form's still waiting for sign-on.
Right, okay, thank you. And then, has there been any consideration of helping to subsidize transit passes at all, given the limited parking nature and, you know, the access to bus routes?
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, walking distance to the red line and indigo lines, and there are two bus passes that go through it as a part of the project, I mean, two bus stops that go run, run by it. As a part of the project, we agreed to subsidize a shelter, or put money towards a shelter. That number, I think it's like 20,000, I can pull it up here, Quinn might be able to...
That's fine.
$12,000, that's it. So, we're subsidizing the cost of a shelter for 12,000. I don't think we have any subsidies for like a bus permit for the residents on this particular project.
Okay, I would just suggest it, but yes, I realize you didn't have that as part of your mitigation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Ross, how are the parking stalls assigned throughout the uses? Are they for commercial or residential, and how is preference given if they are residential?
Yeah, well, you could probably go, Madam Ambassador, to the floor plan, that shows the parking, just as we're talking about it. We, we, there are no, you know, none are related to the unit, so it's going to be driven by residential preference. There is a requirement for, I believe, one parking space for the retail spot, but I guess it really will depend what goes there. I mean, it could be a community-based office, in which case, you know, probably, you know, someone from the community working there, which we might not need the parking, so it's fluid at this point. We do not have any assignments at this point, except for that shared parking, and the shared parking would be available to all the residents. They would be able to sign out when they want to use the shared parking.
Okay, thank you. I had a few questions on the grading of the site. I think a few of them were touched on in the presentation, but just so I understand, that second story, as the site slopes up, that is what is given access to the area, like above the retaining wall, or?
Yeah, the next slide, I believe, let's see. Let me see if this is the one. Yeah, actually, that was the one. If you could go, Madam Ambassador, you see how there's a door?
Yeah.
A little bit, yeah, so there will be access, but just scroll a teeny bit down, Madam, but there you go. So, it's, initially, we had it going straight out to the back, but it was a little bit too permeable to the, to the, you know, that, it's not parkland right now, it's owned by Boston Edison, but maybe in the future it will be parkland. So, it was thought best just to contain our project, so that there's not bleeding into what might be future parkland in the future. For that reason, there's a wall when you enter that, when you exit that portion of the building, even though you're awfully close, you're flush to the ground, there's actually a kind of a wall on our side without any gates getting access through the back, for that reason.
Okay, thank you.
May I open up public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's an acting call for the Mayor's Office of Elementary Services. Background, community information on this process, 120 Boden. This project fell between two civics, Meeting House Hill and Greater Boden Community Association. Meeting House Hill did show full support on this project. Greater Boden Community Association hasn't come to a quorum at this time. We defer to the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Quinn from BPDA?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to defer to the staff in Counsel Rell's office to speak before I do. If that's all right?
Okay, sure.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Ayumi DeWuwa from the Office of Counsel for IRL. And the applicant for 120 Boden Street received full support from those from the Meeting House Civic Association, but Greater Boden in Geneva, they held their meeting yesterday. They didn't have enough members present to vote and come to a quorum, so the council would like to defer to the board.
Okay, thank you. Quinn?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. So, again, my name's Quinn Valsich. I'm a project manager at the BPDA. This project completed the Article 80 review process, including two BPDA-sponsored public meetings. It was approved by the BPDA board on October 13th, 2022. I wanted to emphasize the planning review that went into the BPDA determination that this level of height density is appropriate for this location, and in our view, deserves zoning relief. This project received additional design focus, given its prominent location in its community, and was viewed by our planning staff as the gateway to this corridor. It's in compliance with the Fairmount Indigo Planning Initiative, four corners of Geneva Ave Station Area Plan, it was completed in 2015, and it meets the goals of the plan to redevelop larger vacant sites and proximity to commuter rail station at an increased level of density. The project will provide mixed income housing in a community that receives relatively low development interest at this scale, and will include family-sized units at the request of the community and elected leaders.[1764.08] The BPDA staff found the project to be consistent with the city's goals, and the project has the full support of the agency and its board. The project also received support from many members of the community throughout the process, as well as the Boden Geneva Main Streets Organization and Councilor Rell's office in the review process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Just a note, Madam Chair, we have, we do have letters of support on hand.
Yeah, thank you. Jessica.
Councilor Rell's office, I see they have another person by the name of Rebecca, whose hand is raised up.
Only if they're adding new information.
Yeah, just from Councilor Rell's office. Not, Councilor Murphy, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just want to go on in support and thank you for that presentation. Attorney Ross, that was informative, so, and I know the neighbors that I've spoken to are in favor, so I want to go on record as support. Thank you.
Rebecca.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Zlatowicz. I'm here on behalf of Representative Rell, who is expressing his strong support for this project. As a former member of the BPDA and a resident of the community, he is in full support and is excited to see which project will go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Solomon, City Council Large Michael Flaherty, and Councilor on Record and Support.
Okay, Minor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, mine approach with the carpenters union. In behalf of all our members that live in the Roxbury, Mattapan area, we'd like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Jen Carte. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Good morning, my name is Jen Carte. I'm at eighty-four Tonawanda Street in Fields Corner. I want to, I will defer to the comments from BPDA. They articulated well all of my support and add that this building has been through at least three significant redesigns in response to community feedback. So we appreciate the developer working with us to get an excellent project off the ground. Thank you.
Hi Vivian, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition. All right. Just go to Nene.
Good morning, this is Nene Lord, one oh three Wells Avenue in Dorchester. I will defer to the previous comments in support of this project. I also stand strongly in support of this project. Thank you.
I think we're getting the idea on support. Is there, are there any other, how many more raised hands are there? Jessica.
Two.
I can't see them, so.
Right.
Vivian, are you speaking?
Sorry, can you?
Yes, are you here to speak in support or opposition?
Yes, support briefly. Vivian Giorg, thirty-two Dickinson Street. This is an area that needs to be, really needs to be revitalized and bringing housing here. So everything that was said before, we're mentioning support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? Harith, and then Davita. Sorry.
Hello, good morning. I represent, my name is Bruce Hardley, I represent the Boden Geneva Main Streets. And due to all of the benefits to, that this project brings, Boden Geneva Main Streets is not against this project.
Thank you. Madam Chair, do you want me to keep that looking? I don't know, please, something to give to us. I think we get the idea on support. So I'm, yeah, I think we're, I think we're good. Any, any other questions from the board? If not, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with BPDA review.
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next on the list, we have case BOA one four one seven three four six. The address of fifty-seven Nightingale Street. Is the applicant or representative present with us?
Fifty-seven Nightingale, is Mr. Fortuna on?
Yes, I am. Madam Chair.
Great, can you introduce yourself and your address and just walk us briefly through this?
Hi, my name is Darwin Fortuna. I am a licensed architect for Pro Design Architects out of Fifty Grove Street in Salem, Massachusetts, representing Mr. Melvin Vazquez. He's actually here, you could add him to panelists so he could also speak. The project, basically, it's utilizing an empty lot that right now, it's not functional in any way, shape, or form. So the owner is actually a member of the community, and he's starting out as a developer from within the community. We had met with the voters already, and there was no opposition. We informed the neighborhood association of the project, but weren't not able to get any responses regarding a meeting with them. And we had, we had already scheduled these meetings, so we decided to just proceed and come into the ZDA. Unfortunately, we just weren't able to communicate with neighborhood association. So like I said, the project is basically utilizing an empty lot that because of the size, shape, and form, is, hasn't been functional. And in looking at the neighborhood, those are some of the pictures of the buildings within the community that we looked at. The owner expressed his desire of maintaining a similar looking feel within the neighborhood and the community, and that's acceptable for the east. It is three dwelling units, people decker, stacked with as many bedrooms as we could possibly put in there because we're trying to cater to families, to be families. There are a lot of micro-units and things like that, but there's, there's just not peaceful, you know, places where families can actually grow and stay. And the violations that we have identified here are the floor area ratio, the front yard, the side yard, and the rear yard. And the rear yard mostly because of that weird shape at the back. Basically, it has a little ledge that is deeper, but it's not fully square as all of the other lots will be. So that's sincerely hardship within this lot that is unique to this lot, too. And, yeah, so that's basically a general view of the project. Again, it's three, three units. The basement will be shared and utilized for mechanical and office for the management of the building. Yep, Melvin, you can, you can speak to the project too, and what it means to you as a developer from within the community too, which is something that flow design focuses on. As architects here, we want to increase diversity in the field of construction, architecture, and design. And those are the clients that we attract and the clients that we love, because we need more diversity, not just from the industry and the builders and the contractors, but also the architects and developers that we have.
So these are going to be rentals or condos?
Rentals.
Any questions from the board? Okay, with that, I'll open it up to testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for fifty-seven Nightingale had a butters meeting on December twentieth of last year. They did not present to the top of however triangle. They did send an email on the fifth of December requesting a meeting date, but they were not successful in scheduling the meeting. So as of now, we have zero letters of opposition, zero letters of support for this project. And with that, we would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rell's office?
I apologize, I had my new on technical difficulties, but good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayomi DeWuwa from the Office of Counsel for I'm Rell. The applicant for fifty-seven Nightingale Street have been received no letters of opposition from either the civics or director butters. We'd like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you. They're going to have no additional raised hand. Okay, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso that the plans are submitted to BPDA for attention to tree mitigation and side yard spacing.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
My vote would be yes, Madam Chair, and just to note that BTD is okay with this.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one four two, one, one four two zero eight three three, and the address of seventeen Mascot Street. Is the applicant or the representative available?
Yes, yes, I am.
Good morning, Mr. Small.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, our business address of Montopson Road. Today I'm here seeking relief to change the legal occupancy of the building from a two-family dwelling to a three-family dwelling. We plan to construct a three-story rear addition to the building. Zoning sub-district here is a three F five thousand. Our lot size is four thousand square feet. Violations are as follows. Lot area insufficient, again, it's a three F five thousand. We have a little over four thousand square feet in terms of lot size. FAR, required FAR is zero point five, we're proposing zero point eight. Side yard violation requirement is ten feet on the side, on the right side of the building. It's a pre-existing non-conforming, so we are proposing four feet. And we are short on usable open space. The requirement is thirteen hundred square foot per unit, and we have approximately three hundred square feet.
Mr. Small, you muted yourself.
With regard to the units, Madam Chair, the units consist of three bedrooms, two baths, and each unit is approximately eleven hundred square feet. We'll stop there and entertain any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions from the board? All right, hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, again. So the applicant for seventeen Mascot Street had a butters meeting on September fifteenth of last year. They met with the Greater Mattapan Neighborhood Council, which recommended that the proponent improve upon the recommendations to improve the proposal by reducing the number of parking spaces from three to two due to them feeling that they would not be able to have, I guess, if, people would not be able to get in and out of the space every day with the three parking spaces, so they would like that reduction. Outside of that, we have received no letters of support, no letters of opposition for this project. And so we are deferred to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Rell's office?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Ayomi DeWuwa from the Office of Counsel for I'm Rell. With the applicant for seventeen Mascot Street having received no letters of opposition from either civics or director butters, the council would like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Thank you. I have no addition, oh, once again, Council Murphy?
Yeah, sorry, I'm in support, but I did, he muted a little when you mentioned the space of open space, what is required and what you have. So I just couldn't hear what you actually have.
Yeah, the requirement is thirteen hundred square feet, and we have approximately four hundred.
Oh, still can't get that number though, far.
Four hundred square feet per unit.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I have no additional raised hands, thank you. Thank you. I was just going to say, Mr. Small, do you want to comment on the parking spaces?
Yes, we are proposing, the driveway are, just, eleven-foot driveway, driveway on the left-hand side of the building, and we're proposing three parking spaces in the rear. They're going to be condos, so we're hoping to get one space per unit.
Okay. Is Mr., does, is Mr. D'Amico on, any concerns about that? Okay, hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm going to approve with approval with proviso that the plans be submitted to the BPDA for review.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA one four two three zero five five, the address of five seventy-two to five seventy-four Columbia Road. This process, this, this case has been through the Article 80 review?
Yes.
Is the applicant or their representative available?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time today. Susan Chu with Dorchester Bay Economic Development Corporation, five ninety-four Columbia Road, Dorchester, presenting on behalf of the project proponents, Dorchester Bay and Preservation of Affordable Housing, which are both nonprofit, both works at the Commonwealth. With me today presenting are my colleague from Dorchester Bay, Beth O'Donnell, Attorney Joe Lieber of Klein Hornig, and Architect David Lee of Stoneley. Our project is Columbia Crossing, located at five sixty-eight to five seventy-four Columbia Road. It is the culmination of over two decades of community and city planning for Upphams Corner. The project itself is a mixed-use, mixed-income, all affordable housing development proposed for an urban infill site. The project proposal includes the creation of forty-eight new units of affordable rental housing targeted to households earning thirty percent to eighty percent AMI, including artist housing. It also includes the rehabilitation of the historic Dorchester Savings Bank into commercial space aimed for arts-oriented organizations, businesses, further anchoring the arts and innovation district that has been planned for the neighborhood. The project itself has received Article 80 approval from the BPDA November of 2022, as well as Affordable Housing Acceleration Certificate in the Mayor's Office of Housing. I now turn it over to Joe Lieber to talk about the relief sought.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the board. Joseph Lieber from Klein Hornig, business address of one oh one Arch Street in Boston. I'm just going to give a really quick description of the, of the project, just to set up the discussion of the zoning relief, and then David Lee, the architect, will speak more about the design elements after me. But, you know, the, the existing historic Dorchester Savings Bank is being retained and rehabilitated for community and arts uses. To the left of the existing building, next to the drive aisle, there's going to be an addition added that, that's, we're calling the glow box, it's a glass-enclosed commercial space that's going to be visible, you know, from the street with the lights in the interior. There's an L-shaped addition to the rear where the forty-eight affordable dwellings are going to be, and the existing drive aisle is going to remain and going to be used for access to the, to the parking in the rear. So just with that background, I want to just mention the relief that's needed. There are a couple of conditional uses, artist mixed use in the, in the residential space in the rear, and art use in the commercial space in the front. The precise art uses are not yet determined, but there will be some arts-oriented uses in that area, and this, this relief will allow that to proceed. We need a variance for FAR. The maximum allowed is 1.0. We have approximately 2.89, with seventy-five, approximately seventy-five thousand square feet of building space and approximately twenty-six thousand square foot lot area. We need a height variance, sixty-seven feet, where the maximum allowed is forty. We need a variance for usable open space. The requirement is fifty square feet per dwelling unit, which amounts to two thousand four hundred square feet. We are providing five hundred, with perhaps a little bit more in the exterior, depending on some, on the way it's counted. Rear yard, there's a requirement of twenty foot. In, in most of the portions of the rear yard, we exceed twenty feet, but there is a, a small portion. You can see it on this chart, sort of in the middle of the lot, where the rear yard is quite narrow, three and a half feet. It's actually going to be deeper than the existing condition, because there's going to be a little bit of demolition in the rear. But in essence, this is continuing an existing non-repliant condition in that portion of the rear yard. We are also subject to neighborhood design overlay, district review, but that's been addressed through Article 80 process. But we do need a variance for that. And finally, for street wall continuity, the building is going to be set back a little bit further from the sidewalk, from other buildings on the block, to increase pedestrian safety and pedestrian flow. from other buildings on the block, to increase pedestrian safety and pedestrian flow for the commercial space entry in front of the building. That's pretty much all I had to say about the zoning relief, unless there are any questions. And I'll be followed by David Lee.
Any questions from the board? Not yet, all right. Just brief, briefly on the plans, thank you.
The building is located, I, I will speak very briefly to the architectural and urban design operations. The new building is right in the heart of the Upphams Square evolving Arts and Innovation District. The basic concept is merely built upon the iconic Dorchester Savings Bank building, beautiful Art Deco-type building. As you can see, there was an unfortunate two-story addition to it built sometime back in the 40s, 50s. But anyway, we plan to take that down and replace it with a transparent element, which we call a glow box, that will, along with the bank itself, be rented to arts-oriented and commercial users. In addition, that's gonna give us a chance to add some open space on a purpose plaza, which will be available for outdoor use that will serve the neighborhood. Very much in need of that kind of space. Next. This gives you an image of the, in the evening with the glow box and the bank well lit, and the mass of the housing setback from the street. So we are really very compatible with the basic mass in, in this district. We're gonna have a minimum number of parking spaces, I would imagine, overall. You can see that the glow box is set back just a little bit from the construction bank, which allows a much greater visibility for pedestrians and for cars coming and going along through the plaza. But that plaza, on any given day, with the intended residents, we could close down, leave for an art event. Next. It's the usual difficult site in the city. We're having to try and get as many new plans that make sense from a scale plan, but also affordable in economic sense. There are some slight issues with the property, not nearly very challenging, and we will be addressing those. And as you can see in that little shot in the middle, we're actually gonna open that up a lot more, so that there'll be greater availability for pedestrians for local people in the area to take advantage of the community public space. And so that pretty much, we're pretty much coupled with our difficult concept.
Thank you. Just, so, we, we did receive some comments about delivery and parking issues with abutting businesses, I'm wondering if one of you can address that?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I can address that, and maybe my colleague Beth O'Donnell would chime in. So we have been in talks with the abutter, which owns a pizza shop. They, because this site has been underutilized for many years, the, the owners, the previous owners of the property and the current owners of the property have allowed them to use a portion of the rear for deliveries and parking. And we have been in talks with them to talk about setting up a loading zone at Columbia Road, as well as designating limited use of two exterior parking spaces that we have down the drive aisle for pickups and deliveries.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Are these gonna be condos or rental properties?
These will be rentals, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, may, may I hear public testimony?
Just to note first, Madam Chair, we do have letters of support and opposition.
Yes, thank you. Jessica, are there any raised hands? Oh, Quinn, well, let's have Quinn speak from BPA. Oh, okay.
Thank you again, one last time this morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Quinn Valicich, I'm the project manager at the BPA. The Columbia Crossing project underwent a thorough review process, including four public and impact advisory group meetings. The BPA board unanimously approved this project on November 17th, 2022. The project, the proposed project is located in the heart of Upphams Corner, within the planning boundaries of the Upphams Corner Station Area Plan, a planning process which was part of the larger Fairmont Indigo Planning Initiative established in 2012. The proposed project makes significant progress towards realizing planning goals outlined in the Upphams Corner Station Area Plan, including those of developing mixed-income housing near the Main Street and Station Area, protecting existing community assets and historic buildings in Upphams Corner, strengthening an active and walkable Main Street district with residential uses, and promoting public art and activities that reinforce the district as a destination for cultural events. The project will provide much, much affordable housing, artist housing, affordable community space, and preservation of the Dorchester Savings Bank, and is why the BPA board voted to approve this project. If you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer those, thank you.
Thank you. Rep Morrell's office?
Hi, my name is Rebecca Zlottowitz, I'm here on behalf of Representative Morrell to strongly support this project. We are very enthusiastic about the increase of affordable housing for our families and for artists in our community, and want to show our full support, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, actually, those of Neighborhood Services. At this time, there are no underway concerns of this project, or to defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie Ryan from Frank Baker's office, we would like to go on record in support of this applicant, thank you. Okay, Chris Rooney? State your name and address. Oh, okay. I was gonna say, Council Murphy's on. Oh, Council Murphy, I apologize, sorry.
Oh, no worries, I just wanted to go on record in support, full support of this, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, C.D. Collins, Speaker of the House, Michael Flaherty, Council to go record and support.
Yeah, well, Chris Rooney?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Rooney, Development Officer at the Mayor's Office of Housing. MOH is in full support of the project.
Thank you. David is in, Joan? David, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Okay, go to, oh, Joan, go ahead.
Joan Thai, I am the 25 Eastman Street in Dorchester. I'm the president of the Board of the Upphams Corner Main Streets, and I'm also a longtime resident of the neighborhood. And Main Street is fully supportive of this project and looks forward to seeing it be built and completed.
Thank you. Thank you. John, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, John Smith, Executive Director of Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, 550 Dudley Street, Roxbury. We, on behalf of our board group, as a board of us, we're confident that this Columbia Crossing project will contribute to anchoring the Upphams Corner Arts and Innovation District, and we believe that, you know, through the community process that they have done, we have been a partner with them in this, and also the Mayor's Office of Housing, that they have really answered, you know, many of the questions that were posed in this RFP, specifically around development without displacement, you know, and focused development in terms of building out more housing in this area that's needed, and especially their diversity and inclusion plan. So again, we're in full support of this, thank you so much.
Val? So David, I see you're unmuted, go ahead, David, state your name and address for the record.
David Duraco, 14 Virginia Street, directly behind the project. And I, I'm in favor of it, but I think the apartments, the number of apartments needs to be reduced. The building is higher than any other building around, and it's too close to the, you know, to look to my property, it's very close, and to my two abutting neighbors, it's the same thing, and we're all, you know, would like the building reduced a couple floors and, you know, not so close to the property line.
Thank you, all right, and Val?
Hi, good morning, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm having problems with my audio, sorry. Hi, this is Val Daly from Upphams Corner Main Street, and we are in support of the Columbia Crossing project. This project development focuses on maintaining affordability for local residents, providing an artist-centered community civic and commercial space for residents and artists in Upphams Corner. This project is also an important component in the city's vision for the continued redevelopment of Upphams Corner, particularly as it relates to the planning of the Arts and Innovation District. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me keep going, Madam Chair. How many more raised hands do you have? Five. I, I would say, unless there's anyone in opposition, I think we, we understand the support and appreciate it. Okay, so I'll lower all hands, is anyone in opposition for the project, can we raise your hand? Okay. Well, Mr. David Arisbo, so, David Arisbo. Okay, Jennifer? Can you state your name and address for the record, please? There's also a Tina who looks like they're opposing. Go ahead, Tina, I sent a request on mute.
Hi, how are you this morning? I'm the, one of the owners of the immediate abutting.
Can you give your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the immediate abutter, my name is Tina Zeronias from 566 Columbia Road. We are also the owners of the building and have the tenants that own the nail salon that operate out of our business. We have spoken extensively with the folks over at Dorchester Bay regarding this project, and the proposed loading zone will eliminate the three or four limited spaces we have on our block, which will cause enormous friction amongst the business owners in front of our neighbors' businesses. And it won't solve the issue of our deliveries during snow emergencies, and it's already a really very traffic congested road and artery out of the city. And we just strongly oppose this project, we haven't really heard much other than the loading zone option, and it does address the concerns of the business owners of the community that have been there for over 30 years.
Thanks, okay, Jennifer?
Hi, good morning, my name is Mark Cabral, I am at 16 Virginia Street, Dorchester, directly behind this property. I am opposed to it simply because the only parking we currently have is being taken away by this project. This project is removing 40 to 60 parking spots in the neighborhood. Not only that, it's a cultural center. They will have events with no parking at all. I don't know where anyone is expected to park for these events.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. No additional raised. Does the proponent want to respond to the parking, again, the parking questions?
Sure, Madam Chair, there will be parking for the proposed project, we have 19 parking spaces, 15 within the garage and for exterior.
And is that for both residents and the commercial use, or just the residents?
The programming is to be determined right now, it depends on the parking demand ultimately between residents and commercial use once the building is in service.
Okay, well, I'll encourage you to continue to work with your neighbors as we hear this ongoing concerns. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to
Yes, go ahead.
Make, make a couple of comments, not, not particular questions. Having worked in this area for early part of my career in Boston, and this is definitely very consistent with, with the, with the plan that's there, so I don't have any particular questions, but I also, I guess I'd like to comment on the parking, there is a municipal parking lot there, so I don't think that that came up in terms of the comments around the, the loss of parking, that, let's not forget that Upphams Corner does have a municipal lot.
Okay, thank you, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. And I just want to point out, I think the shape of the law ultimately sort of dictates the design of the building, so I think that sort of makes the waivers appropriate in this case for the dimensional violations. I think it's a really nice use of adaptive reuse of the building and keeping that existing bank-bank, and I'm really happy to see deeply affordable units. There's varying levels of affordability, and there are 10 units at 30% AMI, and I, I'm really happy to see that. So I would like to make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
I second that.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, this is definitely in harmony with the local community.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Chair, at this time, I'd like to ask if there are any deferrals or withdrawals from the 11:30 timeframe?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary, 1 Everett Street?
Okay. The last piece of the 11:30s?
Yes.
That, in that case, that is, that is case BOA 1309297 at 1 Everett, at 1 Everett Street. Will the applicant or his representative speak?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Miller with the business address of 28 State Street in Boston, McDermott Colton Miller, on behalf of the applicant here, Richard Garofalo and Everett Development Partners. We are here, I'm requesting a deferral today, this is our second request, because we originally wanted to continue working on the community process for this application related to revised plans. And as part of that process, we met last night with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood Association, and in order to give them time to properly review and vote on the presentation we gave them last night, we're requesting a deferral to the next possible date, so that they can review and weigh in on the, the project.
Thank you. Mr. Solis, do you have a date?
Yes, Madam Chair, May 23rd is the next available date.
Thank you, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to grant deferral to May 23rd.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, this is Mike Ross, I have an address of 1 Carmen Street, Two Matters, and 1A Carmen Street.
Okay, so we have companion cases, Mr. Stenbridge?
And those will be, first will be case BOA 950222 1 Carmen Street. And along with that being case BOA 950227 with the address of 1A Carmen Street. The applicant or his representative speak to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Mike Ross again, from Prince L. Bell, we were in front of you, I believe it was in January when we asked for a deferral on this matter. We made some changes to the project, and when it came back from the zoning plans examiner, there was an additional violation that we had not anticipated, it was just a corner lot, which should have been there. It wasn't there on the initial, initial, you need visibility on the corner lot. So that additional violation has to be advertised. We're not properly in front of you without it being advertised, and so unfortunately, we were gonna go today, but we have to wait for that advertisement to cycle through.
Okay, Mr. Solis, do you have a date?
Yes, Madam Chair, May 23rd.
All right, we're getting close on that one. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Franky.
Make a motion to grant the deferral to May 23rd.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thanks, Val.
Next on the list, we have case BOA 1332592. The address of 19 Woodville Street. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Mr. Rohassan? Hi, Peter, are you representing them? You can unmute yourself. I sent a request to make your panelists, give me one second. Thank you. Become a panelist, you can unmute yourself and present the project.
Madam, she's good.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Russell. Sorry, let me just quit, my name?
Sorry, let me just quit. My name?
Can I confirm, do you have plans for that show in the basement living space?
Yes, Madam Chair, they have presented ISD there on the slide deck for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. I just made a panelist. My name is Kyle Smith, business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay for Sotero Law here on behalf of the applicant. I also have the applicant on the call with us as well.
Are you presenting?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, floor is yours.
Thank you. So we have a pre-existing three-family structure. We have a basement level which is currently unfinished with three units on first and second and third floor. The proposal is to not modify the envelope of the building in any way, but to extend a currently existing linear drive to provide three off-street parking spaces to the rear, and then to finish the basement level to effectively render the first-floor unit a duplex unit of basement level and first floor, thereby increasing the rough livable square footage of the building by about 950 square feet to include the basement, to then retooling a little bit of the interior layouts of the other existing units. So we then trigger a violation for the reduction of usable open space because of the increased paving for parking. And then we have an FAR violation. We have a maximum FAR of .8. Our proposal is for approximately .93. I just want to note that the natural grade and slope of the lot, as you go from front street to rear parcel, slopes downward. So the rear of the structure has full accessibility, full door, et cetera. So it's not as though, you know, window wells, emergency egresses are the sole forms of egress. We do have good exposure of the building's foundation to the rear.
Parking spaces are there currently? Are there any?
Currently, there is a linear drive that does support two or three cars in tandem.
Okay.
That does cause maneuverability issues, et cetera. So the proposal is to create, you know, allocated designated parking spaces to eliminate the maneuverability issues.
Mr. Stembridge, is there any note from Mr. D'Amico? I'm assuming he's not on.
Not, not in the file, Madam Chair.
Okay. And I'm assuming he's not on, Mr. Ambassador? Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Smith, I'm wondering if the BPD already reviewed this project and it said something about this.
So the reason I asked about the basement is their recommendation was based on there not being plans related to basement living space. But clearly, Mr. Smith has shown us that.
Yes, and the top left corner of your set of plans is reviewed by ZBA for purposes, you know, ISD. So they affirmatively have been passed before ISD, so this is definitely on the city's radar. But we have not had any, I have not had any communication with the BPD as of this point. Madam Chair, the BPD also seems to say about off-street parking layout. So what are we seeing here for off-street parking layout? If you go up on your slide deck, you will see existing plan versus proposed. So I believe. Is it being proposed as tandem or? No, if you continue going vertically in the slide deck, it's proposed three off-street parking spaces to the rear of the structure. Here you are for proposed. One and two and three to the rear. Thank you.
Any other questions? Jessica, may I have testimony?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keesha Santana with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. An abutters meeting was held on August 16th, 2022, where no abutters were present. But they did meet with DS and I on December 1st, where DS and I wrote a letter stating that they are neither in support or opposed to the project. They expressed concerns about possible condo conversion in the future and would like to engage if the owner applies for condo conversion. And at this time, it would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Lorraine Payne Wheeler, and I'm representing Councilor Fernanda Anderson today. And I am here to give her support to the variance that had been requested, but ask that the parking be reviewed. We're in support as long as it meets the dimensional requirements. There are bays on this building and the building next door, and we just want to make sure that that meets the requirements.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands at the moment. May I have a motion?
Before we make motion, Madam Chair, we do have letters of support for the project.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve with BPD designer view around the parking layout.
Would you want to include BTD?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To confirm, this is the BPD designer review specifically targeting parking and BTD.
And BTD review, yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next on the list, we have case BOA 1423032 with the address of 48 Ellery Street.
That has been deferred?
Was been deferred.
Yep, we're on West Canton.
So we'll move on to case BOA 1397214 with the address of 154 West Canton Street. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Adam Barnas. I'm attorney with Roberto's Real Miler, 255 State Street in Boston. With me this evening, or this morning, is Joe Fattone in Studio Draw. I'm here on behalf of Evan and Rebecca Hornbuckle, the trustees of the Evan Hornbuckle Revocable Trust. So we are here seeking a conditional use permit to permit the construction of an uncovered deck nine feet off the rear of the building at 154 West Kin, with exterior stairs facing a private alley per Section 64-9.4 code. The Hornbuckles are longtime Boston residents. They've lived in the South for numerous years. They purchased this property approximately two years ago and are planning for renovation, with the home to be used as their primary residence. The property includes a four-story townhouse, including a basement, and a private rear yard with brick patio, planted boxes, and gravel parking area. This rear, the rear of the property is bounded by a private alley of 521. The renovation includes construction of a new uncovered deck off the rear of the first floor of the structure with approximate area of 168 square feet, featuring stairs down to the rear yard along the southeastward lot line of the property. It's this deck that requires the conditional use permit from the ZBA. While all the other construction is dimensionally compliant, Article 64-9 requires conditional use permit for any deck extensions into the rear yard above the first story. And while this deck is technically on the first story of the building, we believe it was cited due to the walkout basement in the rear of the building, which may effectively treat this as a second-story balcony. That said, the relief we are seeking is minimal. The deck is consistent with other homes in the zoning district of neighborhood, as well as other properties with, within the private alley 521. The property is also subject, or sorry, the project is subject to Gcod. BWSC approved this project on January 17th, and a no-harm letter was issued on February 2nd of this year regarding community outreach. ONS hosted an abutters meeting on November 16th.
All right, they will walk, they will walk through that. Thank you.
Sure. Happy to answer any other questions the board asks.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. Then we have both letters from the applicant.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Crucially with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Office held in an abutters meeting in November of 2022, where no opposition was shown by the abutters. Office would like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Have no raised hands. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1392166. The address of 274 Chelsea Street. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Yes, good morning, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn with the business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. If we could jump ahead to slide four, that's probably a good place to start. As I do a quick review of this proposed build of the project. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a pre-existing non-conforming use located at the corner of Brooks and Chelsea Street, East Boston. As you can see from the photo, the ground level has historically been utilized for commercial and various retail uses. It's the two upper levels are residential uses. Our proposal would change the legal occupancy of the building from the ground-level retail and two residential to three residential units, so essentially eliminating the ground-level retail. By going to three residential units, that would actually be changing this to a conforming use. There is no proposal to modify the existing footprint of the building or increase the height. The proposal would essentially require work or involve work all interior. In addition, there will be some updates to the exterior of the building as well. The skin of the building will be changed out from what we can see here to a more updated version, potentially hardened plank and other types of similar materials that are used in newer construction. Most of the character, though, however, this building will be maintained. We would certainly be improving the ground-level appearance as well. If we want to jump down a few slides, we can go to the floor plans. We are not proposing any work to be done in the lower-level basement. If you can jump down to, I believe it's slide 13 for the floor plans, I can just run through the program itself. The modification, as I indicated, would essentially occur on the first level, whereas you can see here, we would be proposing to change that to include a two-bedroom, two-bath unit. Of course, with the extent of the renovations that would be happening for this project, we would be completing a full upgrade to the life safety of the building as well, so that is current, under the current version of the building code with respect to sprinklers and fire alarm. With respect to the zoning relief, that would be necessary. Because we are changing the use from previously, the previous use of commercial retail space to residential, there are a few technical violations that Article 53 get triggered. First would be the Florida ratio, changing the space that does trigger the FAR to go to habitable space, habitable residential space from commercial. So that is the first variance we're requesting. With respect to minimal usable open space, the building, as you probably can see from the site plan, occupies pretty much the entire site. There isn't a lot of usable open space currently with the building. However, because Article 53 does require a minimum of 300 square feet for each dwelling unit that you propose, we would not be able to meet that requirement, even though we're not changing the footprint of the building or decreasing any of the space that exists on the exterior now. So we do require room for that as well. With respect to parking, even though retail space would be in more intense use under Article 53 and require more parking, because we are changing that from retail, commercial to residential, Article 53 does require that you include at least one off-street parking space for each additional unit you are proposing for a one-to-three unit building. We believe that even if parking were able to be accommodated on the site, that would come at great cost and detriment to the surrounding neighborhood because we would have to introduce a curb cut. And I know that BTD's policy, in terms of the city's policy, is not to create private parking for one vehicle and take away public parking for other vehicles that may utilize Chelsea or Brooks Street. So we are requesting variance for that. Other than that, everything else is relatively straightforward. I'm happy to answer any questions by the board.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Lynn. Any questions from the board? Okay.
Madam Chair, I do have a question. I would like to hear just how changing the first-floor commercial is consistent with the context of Chelsea Street and the neighborhood there, which has, you know, other commercial uses along it. And why going from first-floor commercial to first-floor living space at this corner is necessary?
Thanks, Mr. Aiken, for the question. Yeah, I'm sure, as you're familiar, this section of Chelsea Street, you know, is leaning more towards residential. I believe as you approach Day Square, which is about two blocks, two and a half blocks to the north of this site, you do see more ground-level uses, which would be more consistent with retail or mixed-use buildings. As we head, you know, sort of mid-Chelsea, between here and Visconti, I think it's more predominantly residential. There are some commercial uses on some of the corners. This particular site just does not lend itself very well to commercial use. There have been a number of different uses, including private clubs and other small uses that don't really seem to last in this location. So the preference is to look at a residential change.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
I have a question about the penthouse. So I saw that there is a penthouse being removed, but is there one being added as well? Can you talk us through that?
Yeah, sure. If we can jump down to, I believe it's 15 and 16. So this is the actual elevation showing what the finished product would look like, including the change to the lower level. My understanding, and I don't know if we have somebody from Chu and Company on the call. My understanding is the existing headhouse, that's pre-existing condition, was intended to remain. There is no roof deck being proposed, but for purposes of accessing roof for maintenance, I believe that existing headhouse was remaining, so we're not, I don't believe we're looking to make any modification to that.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. Then we have both letters from the applicant for Gcod.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abutters meeting for this project on June 8th, 2022. No abutters were in attendance. The project was also presented to Evo Hill Civic Association twice in June and July of 2022. The association voted to support with 14 residents in favor and three in opposition. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Parra. I am the East Boston Liaison for Councilor Gabriel Coleta. Based on the community process and the votes from the community organizations, and the council would like to go on support in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion for approval with BPD designer review.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1412519 with the address of 302 Chelsea Street. Is the applicant or representative available?
Yes, good morning, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn, business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. If we could jump down to slide five for the street view, that probably is a good place to start for this one as well. Madam Chair, not far from the last project, this is a pre-existing three-family dwelling located on Chelsea Street in between Brooks and Marion Street. Our proposal here would, not unlike a number of other projects in this area of Chelsea Street, would be a complete renovation of the existing structure. We are proposing an addition to the rear, as well as a vertical addition, a setback from the front of the building, and to change the occupancy from three to four units. This would be intended for homeownership upon completion, so these would be four separate condominium units. Certainly, with the extent of renovations that we're proposing, again, this property would also receive an upgrade to the life safety with a full sprinkler system, an updated fire alarm system, as well as an exterior improvement from the current combination of vinyl and wood plank siding that's on the building. and wood plank siding that's on the building. If we could jump perhaps to slide six for the rendering. This is essentially the concept that the architect is proposing to show, the addition above the fourth level. And as is very typical in this area of Chelsea Street, that fourth level is set back a bit to allow for the three-story to be, to remain consistent along, or at least the facade of the three-story to remain consistent along that side of Chelsea Street. If we want to jump down to the, I believe it's the floor plans, I think we can go two, two or three slides ahead, should go to our floor plans. Those existing, if we can jump further. One more, please. Okay, our proposed floor plan to here. So with respect to the program of this building, we are looking to make a high-level unit at the first levels. There would be living space in the lower level of unit one, with living space on the main level as well. The second, third, and the new fourth floor would actually have each be a flat, single-level unit. We are proposing units on the second and third floor to be three-bedroom and the fourth floor to be a two-bedroom, two-bath. If we jump further, I think we have an axiomatic view as well to show a little bit about the elevations, because I know that's usually a concern. So we can see here from both the side and rear elevations that the lower level actually does have a full walkout condition. I know that is typically a concern of the board when looking at creating living space in the lower level. So there would be sufficient area for not only full windows but full walkout in the back portion of the basement. We do propose to introduce rear decks as well, with rear set of egress stairs that go through the back of the building and out to the rear portion of the property. And as you can see, the relationship of that upper level as it relates to the existing building itself. With respect to relief, this is in the 3F 2000 district as well. Our proposal to change this to four units would require variance-free use. I would point out, this area is part of the planning East Boston process that is currently ongoing in East Boston. It has a recommendation for multifamily use, as well as the four-story height limit. I know the BPDA's recommendation tends to consider current context, but I think it's important that the board also understand the direction of potential zoning is going for this particular neighborhood. We do require relief from the lot size. Currently, we do have 750 square feet, 2,000 is the minimum. However, this is a pre-existing condition. The existing building at three units would also be non-conforming. So our change here would be a technical violation with respect to lot size, because we don't meet the current lot size presently. With respect to the rear yard, we currently are required to have a rear yard setback of 15 feet, and that is due to the shallow lot exception that exists under Article 53. We do not require a full 30-foot setback. It's typical in this particular neighborhood. We are, with our addition and the rear decks, within 10 feet of the rear property line. However, the building itself is at about almost a 15-foot setback. We do increase our floor-to-air ratio to 2.87, and that includes capturing that lower level for expanded living space, as well as the addition of a fourth level. We currently are at 1.86, which is, again, a non-conforming condition already. So we'd be increasing that non-conformity a bit to accommodate the additional living area. The height of our building would be four stories, 44 feet. Currently, under Article 53, that is not permitted. Three-story, 35-foot max is the allowable limit. Again, as I mentioned, I believe the recommendation of planning East Boston is to allow for increased heights, at least on this section of Chelsea Street, because it does meet the boulevard or quarter, main corridor planning objectives for planning East Boston. Our usable open space would be reduced to about 177 square feet per unit. 300 square feet per unit is required. We do not propose to incorporate roof decks on this building. I believe we had conversations with the community about that, and there was a bit of concern about having roof decks on this property. So we've opted not to include that, although that would allow us to increase some of our useful open space. And last, but not least, is parking, very similar to the last proposal. This is a pre-existing three-unit building. We're only required to add parking for the additional unit that we do propose, and therefore, for the same reasons as the last proposal, even if we were able to accommodate parking on the site, we would do so to the detriment of the surrounding neighborhood by introducing a curb cut on Chelsea Street, which is not a preferred method for solving the parking issue. This is within close walking distance of the airport T Station and the Breeden Street Park. So we feel that the variance for that one additional space could be granted without a substantial detriment to the purpose and intent of the zoning code in this instance. I'll pause there and answer any questions to the board regarding this project.
Thank you, Mr. Lins. Can you share where the addition, where there are other four stories nearby? Because I don't see any on Google Maps.
I believe on the block going, there's a block between Brooks and Putnam. I believe there are two buildings possibly on the opposite side of Chelsea Street. I know on this side of Chelsea Street, as you can see closer towards Visconti Road, there are at least two or three additional projects that have the fourth story added. And certainly, as you get close to the Day Square, there are a number of four-story buildings that this board has approved, as well as which have been constructed recently.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
I do have one question, Madam Chair. Is there anyone currently living here? Will there be any displacement?
My understanding is no, there's, this is pending a complete renovation. So I don't believe there's anybody present. I believe we're outside the community process as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board, from the board? All right. Can you confirm, is this rentals or condo?
This is intended for homeownership, so this would be a condominium private.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminoli, Boston Groundwater Trust. Then we have both G-Cod letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Natalia Benitez with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS hosted an abudders meeting for this project on April 21, 2022. One abutter joined the meeting, but no concerns were raised. The applicant also met with Eagle Hills Civic Association, and they reported to oppose with nine opposing and six supporting. Those opposing stated that this project would not look in harmony with the rest of the street. They also presented in front of Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, and they supported this project. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Parra. I is Boston Liaisonary Councilor, Gabriel Coleta. Based on the support from Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, the council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
And no additional raised hands.
I see.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Tom Mannion, your Councilor, Aaron Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy would like to go on record on record for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I would make a motion that, in compliance with the BPDA's recommendation, to deny without prejudice based upon the excessive height and lot coverage and the consideration that the project should not exceed three stories here and for have a greater rear yard setback.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair. I agree with Mr. Aiken's assessment, and it is, the context of the neighborhood is largely three stories, and this would be the only four-story, I think, in the immediate neighborhood.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
I agree with David and Katie. Just, it would be the only four-story set of precedent on that block. So, yes, I do agree.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Madam Chair, I'm looking at the Google map. There are a couple more similar projects on Chelsea Street, at 331 Chelsea, that is one block down. So I'm just looking at that. I think the address is 331 or 319 Chelsea. So just looking at that, I think the addition fits the neighborhood. I don't see a huge impact at the street level for the reason I both know.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
I'm sorry, I cut out for a moment.
That's okay.
Was there a change?
No, I'm taking no call.
Okay, yes. Yes, thank you.
Okay. The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's, sorry. Let's take the next case, and then we'll take a break.
The first hearing on, scheduled for 10:30 a.m., is case number BOA 1432386 with an address of 57 Ocean Street. Is the applicant or representative available?
The applicant's on hand. Meet yourself.
Hi there, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time today. Really appreciate it. My name is Matthew Malloy, longtime resident of Boston. Have been at this property since 2005. I'm also the proud owner of Dorchester Brewing Company in Dorchester, Mass. I am here today, the second time around, requesting approval for a single-car driveway to solely support the use of one electric vehicle. It is located to the front left of my property. While I was approved by Public Works last year for the curb cut, last summer I was denied without prejudice by the three-person board on this project and was asked to work with my neighbor to come to some solution on a shared driveway, which I approached, and she denied working with me on that shared driveway. Before I go further on, could someone please make Kevin Deepler a panelist as well? Please, he's my architect?
Yes.
Thank you so much. As you can imagine, I'm very passionate about our environment. While I'm looking to support our environment, I'm also looking to deeply support the mayor's initiative to support electric vehicle use. My project is one of a hardship, as I have no way to install a shared driveway or driveway. And the only option I had, which was draping a cord across the sidewalk, has now been deemed illegal and finable by ISD since the last proposal. At this point, I would like my architect to take you through the site and the proposal. Kevin?
Just in time here. Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Matt. Our firm, my address is 2377 Hill Ave., Principal of Rhodey Architects. We have assisted Mr. Malloy on his application throughout this process. And today, we'd like to just describe to you what is being added. The proposed curb cut, as Matt mentioned, had been approved, is in the front yard. This is the one variance that we're seeking relief on. The pathway that you see kind of leading to the left and up the page is an existing pathway, which will now be converted to a brick paving system in order to be more in keeping with the neighborhood context. The eight-foot-six wide dimension is the minimal dimension of the paving that would be added to sort of, you know, contain the car. And that would just be essentially replacing the path right now that goes to the sidewalk and gives access to the rear of the property. Those plantings that you see also are kind of obscuring the property line right now. So there's an existing 18-inch buffer between the property line and the edge of the current pathway to the rear. There is a kind of fact that the curb cut was approved in October of 2021, and Matt has been going through the process to approve the parking in the front yard. We believe that this is, you know, given the level of support that Matt has received, which is no small task in the Ashmont Hill neighborhood district, it shows the level of support that he's been able to gather from his neighbors and other community members. He also has owned this property since 2005 and has been painstakingly preserving it, maintaining it, and being a good neighbor. I think that should be recognized, and this is a condition, we understand, that has a lot of policy attached to it. We understand the city's desire for electrification throughout all types of uses in the city. And this happens to be a neighborhood where this kind of front-yard parking could fit. There's several precedents of it already, with a lot of carriage houses and rear properties. So we believe that this is not degrading the neighborhood, nor any abiding properties, and we seek your approval today. I'll leave it up for Matt for anything else.
Great. Just going to the next slide, please. I think, I've already covered a lot here. I re-engaged my neighbor, offered clearly $17,000 worth of value. The offer was rejected. There are currently, unfortunately, no options for electric car users if you don't have a driveway in Boston. And like I said, the last option of draping a cord across the sidewalk is now illegal, and ISD will start fining people for doing it. Other cities like Cambridge and Somerville and Medford and others are moving fast with under-a-sidewalk leases, hanging power cords off telephone poles, corner charging stations. Unfortunately, we have nothing at this point in the city. So it's also not really an option to drive 1.7 miles and sit in line with others and waiting hours to charge a car. If you could go to the next slide, please. Just so you know, since the last meeting, my neighborhood was very disappointed that it didn't get approved last time. So they have stepped up behind me, and with 37 letters of support, Ashmont Hill support, which has been said before, there were wonderful neighbors who were very charged, and no one voted no on this, which is exciting. I'll leave it to the other councilors that are here today. Several of them said they were going to speak in support of this, as this is a very unique challenge and very unique times in the city. But I also have strong support from abudders due to the quality of the implementation, as well as the need to support EVs in our community. I'm so committed to this project and so committed to EVs that if I ever go back to a 100% gas vehicle, I will remove the curb cut and the driveway at my own cost. I would just like to leave it there at this point, to see if you have any further questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Can, is there any visual you can show me of where the charger is located? Or you've installed a charger, from what I understand?
That's a great, that's a great question. No, I have not, since I'm waiting to get approval before I would do that. But if you go up to the first slide that was shown, I can show you on the property where it would be. If you see the front of the car, down the walkway to the right at the point of the property, there will be a Level 2 charging station installed. It's a very minimal footprint. It will not be facing the street. It will be facing the side of the house. So it would be minimally invasive, and you wouldn't really see it.
Okay, so there is no current situation that requires, like, has you draping the cord across the sidewalk? Is that correct?
Are you charging now? That's the question, I think.
Yeah.
So I did have a plug-in EV before, but not now, and it was impossible to pull the cord across the sidewalk anyways. I, of course, this has been going on for two years. I can't really purchase an electric vehicle without knowing I'm actually going to get the ability to have a driveway with a charging station. So as soon as, if I were to get approval, I would be going out and buying an electric car.
Got it. So you don't currently have one. Thank you.
Nope.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
I do think this is a unique situation. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, may I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ross Cochrane with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process at this time. Our office had an abudders meeting last year, and additionally, we have received numerous letters of support that are on file. Likewise, the Civic Association also supports the project and has a letter of support on file. At this time, we'd like to defer the board's judgment at this time. Thank you.
Councilor Well, office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayamidio Luwua with Councilor Well's office. And I just, with the applicant for 57 Ocean Street, the applicant received 37 letters of support, including a letter of support from Ashmont Hill Civic Association. The council would like to go on record and support this proposal.
Thank you. Councilor Baker?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie Ryan from Councilor Frank Baker's office. We would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Councilor Murphy, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Mannion of Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
And then Brenda Davis. Oh, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty. Council to go record and support.
All right, and Brenda, if you're looking to get testimony here, can you state your name and address for the record, once muted? May not be given testimony here. I have no additional raised hands. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to let you know, we do have letters of support for this, and we do have a request for denial from BTD Bob D'Amico.
Thank you. So with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, can I ask a question, perhaps of the board or in Mr. Solis? Is there a way we can condition this on electric vehicle use only?
That, I am not 100% sure.
Well, in the past, we have included provisos, if that's where you're going with that. So you could put a proviso in, you know, certainly Mr. Malloy did himself make a comment about, you know, removing the curb cut. However, the only issue with that is, I don't know if that, you know, if you sell the property, what happens, right? But you can certainly put a proviso on there.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to, you know, the situation with the electric vehicle charging and, you know, sort of the place of the structure on the law and kind of prevents a driveway or to allow that. So I'd like to make a motion to approve. I think this is a unique situation, and it's something, you know, I think the city would want to encourage electric vehicles. So I'd make a motion to approve, and to the extent possible, to reflect Mr. Malloy's offer to allow this for electric vehicle and to change it back if there were a gas-powered vehicle.
So Ms. Walwell, can you add a proviso then?
Yes.
This is for EV vehicle use only?
Yes, so approval with proviso is EV vehicle use only.
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, can we add BTD review? I guess they have to oversee the construction.
Are you fine with that, Ms. Walwell?
Yeah, I think the applicant said the curb cut has been approved already, but yeah, I'll add that for BTD approval.
Was that BPD? You said that BTD, right? Or did you say BPD-A?
No, Boston Transportation.
Okay. Well, the problem with that is he already, Bob D'Amico, already said no, so I'm not sure that would be beneficial.
Okay, so I remove that proviso.
With that, may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Walwell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you. The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Best of luck to you, Mr. Malloy. Let's take a 15-minute break.
... in progress.
Just a quick roll call, Mr. Stenbridge?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Present.
Mr. Valencia? All right.
Present.
I see you, yes. Ms. Walwell?
Present.
Mr. Langham? I definitely saw Mr. Langham. All right.
He may be muted, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay.
All right, perfect. Mr. Aiken?
I'm here.
All right, thank you. Let's proceed.
Next case is BOA 1433952. The address of 28 Coffee Street. This, this project is undergoing Article 80 process. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Plugini on behalf of the applicant. With me this afternoon is James Christopher from 686 Architects. So I will start. So 28 Coffee Street. So I will start, so 28 Coffee Street in Dorchester. The zoning in this neighborhood is 2F 5,000. This is a really big lot, it's over 20,000, it's 20,724 square feet. This proposal, this proposal involves a combination of three lots to create that 20,724 square lot. There are two buildings that will be raised, a new building containing 24 residential units and 27 off-street parking spaces and 24 bike spaces. Additionally, two of the cars onsite will be ride-share that residents can use on a reservation basis for the occasion of needing more than one car. This proposal went through a lengthy Article 80 process and was approved by the BPA Board on their January 19th Board meeting. As this went through the Article 80 process and it's more than 15 units, this will also provide affordable units and we're far exceeding, we're approximately 17% affordable units with this developer. And of those units, one will be a studio, there'll be one bedroom, and there'll be two two-bedrooms. Additionally, this proposal is condominium, so this is all ownership, which is important for the community. As far as violations, we have off-street parking and loading, one and a half spaces per unit required for 10 or more units. And we're a little over one, but again, we have the ride-share, two cars will be available. In addition, the developer has also, as whenever anybody buys a unit, will be allotted $300 credit toward using the ride-share company to lessen auto-dependency. Use multi-family residential in a 2F district, FAR, 25s allowed, we're at 132. Height is two stories, 35 feet, we're at four stories, but we're only at 41 feet. Front yard is 15 feet requirement, we're at 11, 7, and 17, 6. Also, this is in the coastal flood resiliency overlay district, and this project was designed with the BPA to be compliant with that section of the code. The unit program, there are 24 units, which is comprised of six studios, six one-beds, and 12 two-beds, common roof deck sat back from the street, and there'll be no fossil fuels used in this building. There will be, as far as the unit mix, there's two beds, they're averaging 872 square feet, one bed 765 square feet, and studios are 624 square feet. And in addition to that, it went through a lengthy community process, we have provided the board 16 letters of support, which you should have, and I'm here to answer any question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, this will come out at some point, but I know, you know, as far as community comments go, there were comments about landscaping and trees, you know, parking concerns, traffic concerns, so we can address those later, but I want you to be aware of that and to address those later. With that, are there any other questions from the board?
I have a quick question, so the parking seems a little excessive for this site, but how will the parking be assigned?
So it would be assigned per unit, so we would have one space per unit for the condominiums. We have an extra space in addition to that, and then, as I stated, we have the ride-share that will have two automobiles, will be available to, say, somebody has a, you know, somebody has to go to work, somebody has to go to a doctor's, pointed out in 128 or something like that. It's a reservation system, so they'll be there used, basically a zip card that's in this property, two zip cards that are located onsite.
Would the ride-share vehicles be open to other residents, not only of this project?
Apparently, it's just limited to the people who live in the building, but depending upon use, that could change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Pugini, do you want to just talk a little bit about trees, landscaping, whether you're preserving, not preserving? What do you?
Sure, when this went through the Article 80 process, you'll notice that we don't have a violation for any open space, because that was something that we kept in mind when we were developing this project. It was to preserve as much open space and provide homeownership, as well as a good amount of affordable units for this proposal. And with respect to the parking, I mean, where, this was kind of difficult, because, you know, you're serving two masters in some respect, right? You go up to the community and they're looking for, you know, two spaces per unit, plus, you know, if somebody has a birthday party, there's going to be guest space and these other things. And then, when you go to the BPA, they want, you know, one per unit or less. So we were kind of trying to, you know, use that balancing act, and we understand we're not going to get 100 on this test, but we really worked hard, and I think the addition of the ride-share cars kind of negates, without over-populating this neighborhood with cars, it negates the potential that people will have two cars onsite.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, can we take public testimony, Jessica?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant, this went through a BPA-led community process, where there were three public meetings held, and the board should have access to those letters of support that were forwarded on behalf of this project. With that, we defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Thanks, Connor, Councilor Murphy, office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Ian, you have Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Councilor Murphy would like to go on record in support, thank you.
Councilor Baker?
Madam Chair, members of the board, our office would like to go on record in support of this project. Just for a quick note regarding the parking, this neighborhood is a transit desert, if you will, so the neighbors around the surrounding property were looking for parking, and that's why the parking looks the way it does, and we wanted to note that the applicant worked with us and the neighbors too, to get that to a good number, so we are in, in support of this, thank you.
Thanks, Minor.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, and Madam Chair, members of the board, mine approach with the carpet proceeding. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Councilor Michael Flaherty, Councilor of Record and Support.
Okay, Erin Coleman, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, my name's Erin Coleman, address is 35 Coffee Street. And my issue is that, did you, you received a letter from Rory Coleman? With an outline of all the issues that are present with this project?
Are you in support or opposition, and can you briefly give some, explain some of your reasoning?
Well, we talked about parking, that's a huge issue, but actually, what I would like to sort of point out is that there is not a hardship to support the granting of eight variances for this project.
Oh, thank you. Alex Ottega?
Hi, my name is Alex, I live at 39 Coffee Street, so I'm in opposition of this. The parking is a very big issue, this neighborhood's not that old. My unit is one of the newer units, built 2012, and every unit after me all has two parking spots per unit, and right now, trying to even leave our parking lot, getting out is a tight curve, because the road is so narrow, and there's a lot of traffic, because St. Anne's has a traffic light to Ashmont, and we're a cut-through street for people who don't live in this neighborhood, due to that they don't want to wait, that they don't want to wait at the light, so they cut through Coffee to New Hall to get back onto Ashmont. So we have an issue with speeding, and then delivery trucks, and everything else after that. So I don't see how there could be any support for a building that's not fitting the actual neighborhood that still exists.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liam McCarron?
Hello?
Hi, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Liam McCarron, 37 Coffee Street, Unit 1, I'm in opposition, kind of second. I don't really care about parking, per se, but it's the fact that more cars will arrive, and the street will be unfavorable as the way it is. It's a two-way street, it's not wide enough to be a two-way street, and for those reasons...
Aside of parking, do you have any other concerns?
Excuse me?
I said, aside of parking, do you have any other concerns?
It's actually traffic, it's a two-way street, and I agree that speeding is a huge issue, with people speeding up and down the street, trying to avoid becoming face-to-face with another bit of traffic, and I'm worried about accidents and actually altercations among drivers, which I've seen in the past.
Thank you, okay. Jessica, can you give me information if you're in support or opposition?
Jessica Monkey, I'm in opposition.
Thank you. Okay, James Patterson, can you state your name and address for the record and give new information? We heard about parking and traffic, are you in support or opposition for the project?
James Patterson, 14 New Hall Street, I'm in opposition.
Okay, thank you, all right. Karen, can you give your name and address for the record, please, and give new information?
Yeah, I'm in opposition to that, I believe that building is just too large for the area. Like has already been said, the street is too small to accommodate that huge building with 24 units.
Thank you. Do you want me to keep going, there's about nine more raised hands here. Let's take two more, I think we're getting the sense of...
Just, feel with me, Madam Chair, but just to note, yes, there are letters of support and opposition.
Yes, we don't, thank you. And then Rory, state your name and address and give new information.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Zoning Board of Appeals, Rory Coleman, Director Butter at 35 Coffee Street. I am in opposition, and I, I think the context of the neighborhood should be considered more carefully. The other four-story buildings were built in the 60s, and this new project with the expansive size of the project is literally trying to utilize every square inch to capitalize on profit, and significantly, that is a substantial detriment to the public good, and substantially derogates the intensive purpose of the zoning code. So with that, I again object to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go with Noreen, and then we'll wrap it up. Noreen, can you give your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Noreen Keeley, I'm at 48 Coffee Street, Unit 3A, it's K with Keeley. And, good afternoon, Madam Chair, I have a few questions, actually, I'm very opposed about it. I've been opposed since the beginning. Currently, right now, there is a building on that place, it's a duplex, and people are in it. So, and the street is, I've seen accidents in front of my house, I've seen altercations, but also, there's a daycare at the end of the street, they come and park their cars and get the kids there. The ballpark has kids, they come and get their cars, cars there. And also the church, the church always seek parking there as well. So, and another question I have is, what about the flood zone? We're in a flood area, I know, I'm in a basement condo, built in 1968, and the flooding of excavating the building would give us a problem, I think excavating that building would give us a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. Would the proponent, would the proponent like to respond to any of those comments before we proceed?
Sure, I think we, I think we touched on the parking a lot, Madam Chair, in what that was involved, but as far as the Article 37, which is the climate resiliency, I touched on that as well. So this building was designed with the BPA to be conforming to the regs and standards of the climate resiliency ordinance. So that was taken into consideration, that's why the building is a little higher, because of that purpose.
Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, here and now, and there is no project manager from BPA, this is there? Jessica, are you aware? All right, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm looking at the project and the benefits that the project has, I hear the comments also from a board opposing based on parking and traffic. Still, I, I think that the project has merits, that will be, provide community benefits to the entire city, and for that reason, I make a motion to approve with the BPA Design Review.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
I do agree with his statement, yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have a number of companion cases.
Yes.
So I will read through them, and then ask for the applicants or representative, ask them. First is case EOA 1430670, the address of 143 Norwell Street. Next is case EOA 1430675, address 145 Norwell Street. Case EOA 1430677, address 147 Norwell. Case EOA 1430679, address 52 Elmont Street. Case EOA 1430681, address 54 Elmont Street. Case EOA 1430688, address 20 Elmont Street. Case EOA 1430690, address 22 Elmont Street. And the last is case EOA 1430692, the address of 24 Elmont Street, sorry, that's the last for the, of those companion cases.
Great, thank you.
At this point, is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, I am, Mr. Secretary. Good morning. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Matt Eccle with Fletcher Tilton, with the business address of 100 Franklin Street. With me on the call today are Duane Boyce and Adler Bernadine from Norfolk Design and Construction, and Chris Drew from 686 Architects. As is written to the record, this does contain eight separate applications, they are all under, basically an umbrella project in conjunction with the Mayor's Office of Housing, and that's why they're viewed as, as one project. It is eight separate lots we're proposing, and eight separate single-family dwellings on what are now vacant lots. As mentioned, this proposal is in collaboration with the Mayor's Office of Housing, and proposes affordable, single-family homes. Currently, we're proposing four of the homes to be at 80% AMI, and the other four to be at 100% AMI. These are basically three different sections, two along Elmont, and then one on Norwell. So 20, 22, and 24 Elmont are all kind of grouped together as three lots, 52 and 54 Elmont are grouped together, and then 143, 145, 147 Norwell, which you see on the screen right now, are grouped together as well. This is a good slide, just to kind of get a feel of the project as a whole. We are proposing kind of two different typologies of buildings, even though they're all single-family dwellings, we are proposing six of the buildings to be semi-attached, so in groups of two, along those three sections of Norwell and Elmont. And then the remaining two buildings will be freestanding, as you can see, with 143 Norwell there on the right. All of these single-family homes are proposed to be three-bedrooms, one and a half bathroom, family-style homes. They average about 1,315 square feet, and they each have two parking spaces. Tandem design, as you can see, again, on the screen, you can see the three separate distinct driveways. The majority of these applications have similar violations. It is a two-family 5,000 district, so the single-family homes are allowed, and in general, are less dense than what the zoning would allow, it's a two-family neighborhood. However, by reallocating the lots, how we did it, we are able to provide these affordable, single-family homes, which is something that the developer and the Mayor's Office of Housing were trying to push here. So as opposed to going for two and three-family dwellings on a lot of this size, we did subdivide the lots and propose these single-family dwellings. With that, I'll pause, I know there's eight different sections, eight different plans, as well as eight different refusal letters, I'll happily go through them on an individual level, if the board would like, but I, hopefully, that sums up what we're proposing as a whole.
I don't think that will be necessary, are there any questions from the board?
Yes, are these, can you repeat, these are the units for market or homeownership?
So all eight, all eight are single-family homes for sale, so there'll be single homeownership, single-family homes, four of them will be at 80% AMI affordable, and four will be at 100% AMI affordable.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question and a comment.
Yes.
My question would be just around any of the timing, you know, with these, has subsidy been awarded yet? What's the sort of timing and phasing of getting them in the ground, and getting them built and occupied, you know, on the market for families? And my comment is just, I understand, you know, the need for parking, but I guess I see that there's a sacrifice for open space for families here by having two spaces, and... it makes sort of usable, usable space outside of the footprint of the house much more, much more limited. So a little bit disappointed at that, but not necessarily suggesting or recommending a change.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Aiken. So in terms of the timing, obviously with these projects, time is always of the essence. The Norfolk Design and Construction, you know, was awarded as the, you know, the selected developer for these projects. And then as soon as this approval, if granted, was granted and the decision is finalized, we would move towards the actual building permits and change of ownership. In terms of parking, I don't necessarily disagree. I think the good thing about this layout is with, with the single-family nature, if it were to be a one-car family, certainly that back portion of the driveway, whether it becomes more permeable or just this blacktop that is more of a, you know, a table and chairs kind of patio area, I think we do have a little bit of flexibility there. So with it being family-style homes and with us not having a direct, we are close to the Fairmont Line commuter rail station, but not in abundance of MBTA. So we do think parking here is important, but we do have some flexibility and your point is well taken.
Thank you. Thank you.
Question?
Yep.
What exists on these, on these lots now?
These lots are all currently vacant.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone from the Mayor's Office of Housing who wants to weigh in?
I believe Tiara was a, she was not elevated to panelist yet, so I believe she was a participant. Tiara.
Yep, okay. Tiara, go ahead. Are you on mute? Give me a second. You're still on mute if you're speaking.
Hi, my name is Tiara Satravol and I'm a Housing Development Officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves a land disposition process that resulted in a RFP with this election of Norfolk Design and Construction as a selected developer. This project includes MOH funding and has full MOH support. Thank you.
With that, do you want to continue with public testimony, Jessica? Sure. Counselor Laurel's office.
Good, oh, still afternoon. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayame De Onguwa from Office Counselor Laurel. In regards to the application for two, in regards to the application for 143 Norwell to 25 Elmont, we having not received any letters of opposition from either the city or Director Butters, the Council would like to go on record in support of these proposals.
Thank you. Sorry, I'll be calling us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Just stating that this project is supported by Harvard, Washington, Norwell Butters. No opposition in this project. Report to the board. Thank you.
There's no raised hands. All right, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Also for approval with BPDA Design Review?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Madam Chair, can I just briefly state, if people are in the attendees section right now and you need to be elevated to a panelist because your project is coming up and you plan on speaking on behalf of your project or if you're part of an attorney's office, please, architect's office, please raise your hand. We just want to make sure people in the right place before we, as we're going through the cases. Thank you, Jessica. Mr. Stenbridge.
Madam Chair, next we have Case BOA 1433649, at the address of 54, 554 to 562 Columbia Road. It's the applicant or the representative present?
Yes, sir. Clerk Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Colton Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. Would you like me to start, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir. Just as a reminder to members, this is an Article 80 project that was approved. Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Joe Hanley, again, McDermott, Colton Miller, 28 State Street in Boston. I am here with my client, who is the proponent, Mike Rooney. Also with me is Jim Podeski, who is an architect with the Architectural Team. Just to give you a brief summary here, then I'll ask Jim to go through the plans for you. As you noted, Madam Chair, this is a Article 80 large project. We have spent the past two years and extensive community outreach and city scoping process for what is a preservation of the existing Fox Hall Building in Upphams Corner and the improvement of an underutilized parking lot at, at the back of it to convert it into new residential housing of which would be 100% affordable and would include also much-needed workforce, middle-income ranged affordability. You can see here in our first slide, our vision and our community values, which are shared with the neighborhood. We are in the heart of Upphams Corner, part of the Upphams Corner Implementation Plan. So this Article 80 process went through a very close collaboration with the BPDA. We were approved back in June, recommended for approval to this board based on the zoning case. This is a development without displacement. The Fox Hall Building is a treasure in Upphams Corner, directly across the street from the Strand. There are existing cafe restaurant that is there now and commercial space, which we are creating improved space for. And there are, there are SRO units that are income restricted above, of which will be updated to larger and improved income restricted housing as part of the development. Again, no displacement. So we look at our values here, trying to preserve and improve this great building that's here, but also look to add affordable housing in a way that is contributing and also consistent with the ecosystem. This board heard earlier the Columbia Crossing presentation. They have a deeply affordable program. We have a complementary range of affordability that we're introducing of a low of 30% of AMI, all the way up to 100% of AMI. Also is to look at this transit development node that is Upphams Corner and how we can future-proof our development in a way that is progressive and is building for the future. Next slide, please. So, Madam Chair, I'll leave you here and then ask Jim to take you through the context, but you'll see the site in the red hash line. Again, at the front is the existing Fox Hall Building. Directly across the street is the Strand Theater. And in the back, we are a corner lot at the corner of Aryan Street, which runs towards the back. And then you'll see this vast, underutilized surface lot, which we are looking to introduce in addition to the Fox Hall Building for a new building with 65 total units of residential housing in a way that is both contributing to that need, but also respectful to our Butters and neighbors in the area with respect to the context. So Jim, with that, I'd like to ask you to take the board through the plans.
Hi, I'm Jim Podeski with the Architectural Team. Next slide. So this is the aerial view. You can see Fox Hall, the four-story building to the right of the church. You can see that's a vacant lot in the rear, currently used for parking. So Aryan Street is on the left of Fox Hall. We'll be using that for entrance into the, into the new garage. You'll see that in the, in the plans to come. So you can see from this slide that the grade rises up from Columbia Road to the rear, to the Virginia Street properties. That grade rises about 17 feet. We're setting the building into the grade, so the building is only four stories apparent at the rear. You'll see that in the, in the renderings to come as well. Next slide. These are photos of Fox Hall from Columbia Road. These, this is a four-story building with the first floor being retail shops with residential units above with some large unused event spaces. This is a historic building, so we'll be treating it as such, providing new windows, matching historic profiles, and we'll be cleaning and repointing the masonry. Next slide. So the rear of Fox Hall has been improved by the current owner recently to include outdoor dining during the pandemic with new lighting for security, better paving, and by working with the community and local artists, murals have been added, which you can see. One mural will stay throughout the renovation. It was done by Artistry Humanity. You can see that in the renderings to come. Next slide. This is a plot plan of the site. You can see Fox Hall on the right and the, the new building is, is in the shaded portion. Next slide. So this is the proposed site plan. So as orientation, Columbia Road is on the right. Existing Fox Hall is also on the right. So we are keeping the, the existing retail spaces on the right. You can see the red arrows that are the, they enter from Columbia Road and also the red arrow on Orion, Aryan Street for the new entry to the building and also the red arrows that indicate the entry into and out of the new garage for the, for the vehicles entering and exiting the garage. You can also see toward the rear of the building, new landscaping toward the rear and toward the north. Next slide. This is a view of the proposed project, looking down Columbia Road. You can see the new six-story addition behind the Fox Hall Building. You can see we're, we're matching the brick of Fox Hall to sort of blend in with the neighborhood. You can also see that mural I mentioned along the first floor of Fox Hall, done by Artistry Next slide. So this is a rendering looking north, northeast. The addition is now in the foreground and we worked with the city and the neighborhood to step the building down toward the neighbors to the left on Virginia Street. So you can see that the building is only four stories, you know, pretty much matching the height of those houses along Virginia Street. And you can see the materials are primarily brick to complement the Fox Hall Building and solar PV you can see on the roof of the addition. Next slide. This is a rendering looking northwest. Fox Hall can be seen in the foreground now with the six-story addition behind it. You can see the new roof deck on the roof of Fox Hall. And you can see the garage entry now along Aryan Street as well. Next slide. So these are floor plans of the building. So starting from the lower right, you can see the garage level with 24 parking spaces and also one-to-one bike parking, so 65 spaces for bike parking. And floor plans, studio spaces on the second floor, studio units, and residential, a mix of residential one, two, and three-bedroom units on the floors above. The existing Fox Hall Building has five units per floor for artist, artist loft units, one and two-bedroom units in the existing building. Next slide. These are the proposed elevations of the building. So the lower right again, you can see the, looking at Fox Hall from Columbia Road, the existing building with the addition peeking out from behind. And on the left, you can see the elevation from our Aryan Street, showing the addition going up Aryan Street, showing the brick with the bays, residential bay windows. So the, there is a core of the elevators and stairs between the addition and the new building. The addition and the existing building, we can see the elevators coming up between them.
Thank you, Jim. Madam Chair, just two very final slides, a summary of the affordability program, which we're very proud of, worked very hard with Mayor's Office of Housing, the BPDA. All 65 units as part of the combined development will be income restricted. What I think is really important here is there is a variety and a diversity of income that is being provided. As you will see, that ranges from 30% of AMI, which is much lower income, all the way up to 100% of AMI, which is intended to provide opportunities for folks who make a good wage and salary but cannot afford to stay in the city. And so we think that that balance is very well achieved and will be very, an important contributor to the neighborhood. So how does this break down? We have eight three-bedroom units, 17 two-bedroom units, and 25 one-bedroom units and 15 studios. 13 are at the lower end of 30% of AMI, 27 units at 60% and 25 between 80 and 100. Next slide, please. This is the final slide, just to review the zoning for you. As you heard from Jim, this is a unique site, both in terms of its topography and the grade, which we've taken advantage of to mitigate the rear yard variance, which is necessary. Also, we are constrained by the preservation purpose here of keeping the Fox Hall Building and preserving it at the front and utilizing the underutilized lot in the back for all affordable housing. Relief that is necessary in particular, floor area ratio is proposed at 3.85 in the allowable one. Also, the building height at its highest point is 71.33. Open space, we're able to accommodate a good amount of open space at 25 per square foot per unit, both on the roof and at the site. And also the rear yard, this is a corner lot. Our original argument was that it would have two front yards, but we were cited for rear yard variance as what would be required is 20. We are between 10 and 17 and we've set the building back. We're also working with our neighbor at the back to create buffering and fencing along that to further mitigate and soften the edge as we get to Virginia Street. Final thing I'll note is ISD did cite us for needing a parking and loading variance that, of course, is not the case under Article 80 Large Project Review. We did go through that process and get that recommendation for 24 spaces, which includes EV programming, vehicle share, ample bike storage, and transit demand management measures to capitalize on this ideal location in the transit node. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And just to confirm, are these rentals or homeownership?
These are rentals.
Any questions from the board? Okay, is there someone from BPDA who wants to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm stepping in for my colleague Steve Harvey on this one.
Stepping in for my colleague Steve Harvey on this one. Thank you again. My name is Quinn Malsich. I'm a project manager at the BPDA. The 554 to 562 Columbia Road project underwent a thorough review process, including two public meetings and two impact advisory group meetings. The BPDA board approved the project on June 16, 2022. Similar to the previous Columbia Crossing project, this project is located in the heart of the Upphams Corner and within the planning boundaries of the Upphams Corner Station Area Plan, planning process, which was part of the larger Fairmont Indigo Planning Initiative, established in 2012. The proposed project makes significant progress towards realizing planning goals outlined in the Upphams Corner Station Area Plan, including those of developing mixed-income housing, protecting existing community assets and historic buildings, strengthening active and walkable Main Street District, and promoting public art and activities that reinforce the district as a destination for cultural events. The project will provide much-needed affordable housing, artist housing, commercial space, and preserve the historic Fox Hall building. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Some background information I have, not at the moment, no concerns at the moment. We defer to the board at this time.
All right, Chris Rooney.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Rooney, Development Officer at the Mayor's Office of Housing. MOH is in support of the project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Pierce Martin from State Senator Nick Collins' office. The senator would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you. Have a good one.
Councilor Murphy's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Anian of Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Councilor Murphy would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Rep. Worel's office.
Good afternoon. My name is Rebecca Zlatowicz, speaking for Representative Worel, here to express our strong support for the project. Thank you.
Councilor Baker's office.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Julie Ryan from Councilor Baker's office. We would like to go on record in support of the project. Thank you.
Mr. Perez.
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Perez, representing the Carpenter's Union. We'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, Councilor to go record support.
Val, can you state your name and address for record, please?
Yes, this is Val Daly with Upphams Corner Main Street, 545 Columbia Road. And Upphams Corner Main Street is in support of the Fox Hall and 65 units of residential housing development project. Thank you.
Thank you. Tina, go ahead.
Yes, hi, Tina, owner of 564-566 Columbia Road and the business located therein. I'm in support of this project.
Oh, thank you, Tina. Yeah, no additional raise stands. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just to note that we do have letters of support for the project.
Yes, thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a question, if I may ask.
Yes, yes.
It's, I think, a question for perhaps Chris Rooney or Quinn from BPDA. The development without displacement, how is that being memorialized to understand that residents in the current building won't be displaced as part of this project?
I would defer to Chris or somebody on the project team for that one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does the proponent want to respond to that?
Sure. Yeah, so Mr. Rooney is, you know, the existing owner of the building, and there are 16 SROs that are in there now on the top level of Fox Hall. And as you saw, this is an addition. So the building that, the new building at the back will be constructed in a way so that there's no displacement with respect to the 16 SROs. In other words, they'll be able to remain where they are when the construction is done. They can then move to, into the improved units. The SROs now are very small and, you know, are not updated, if you will. And so it's also part of our Article 80 Board memo, and we have an affordable house, I'm sorry, an affordable agreement with MOH that will also mandate that. With respect to the ground floor uses, the existing restaurant's doing very well. As you can see, we continue to support them. They have an existing lease. We are restoring, preserving the building, but not removing them in any way, shape, or form. And they will continue to be a part of the development.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, at this point, I'd like to ask for the hearings in the 1:00 p.m. timeframe, if there are any requests for deferrals or withdrawals.
543 East 7th Street.
Okay, that would be case BOA 1419182. The address of, as stated, 543 East 7th Street, with the applicant, or as Representative explained.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor. We are asking for a short deferral on this matter. We are going to depict a clearer image on the plans. So what is shown on those plans is of now, there is a second parcel that is associated with this proposal. The reason why the parcels were not combined is because there's a four-foot easement as a passageway that separates that. But that vacant parcel will be included as the open space for this proposal. So again, to give you, as the board members, a little bit more of a clearer image of what we're proposing on that vacant lot, we're asking for a short deferral, please.
Thank you. Mr. Solis, what is the next available date?
Yes, Madam Chair, the next available date would be May 23.
Okay, and that's your last one, right?
That's the fourth one, I mean.
Oh, boy, okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion for deferral for May 23.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, we will go to the rediscussion section of, at 11:30. We've skipped over a number of cases, which have all asked for deferrals. And we now come to case BOA 1394043, with the address of 8 Sawyer Avenue. Is the applicant for Representative President?
Mr. Christopher, are you on? No, he was on earlier. He sure was. Where'd he go? All right, we're gonna keep moving until these, let's keep moving, then.
Then next, we have case BOA 1369883, the address being 8 to 10 Mercer Street. The applicant for Representative President?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Austin. Madam Chair, members, I represent Mark Little, property owner and developer. This hearing is more of a procedural correction rather than a matter of first impression for the board. What I mean by this is that this application was approved as an ALT application in October of 2020 by this board as proposal to construct a rear and vertical addition to an existing two-family dwelling and change its legal occupancy to a six-unit dwelling with six off-street parking spaces. Subsequent to the board approval, and while under construction, a building wall collapsed, making the structure unsafe, it was therefore necessary to demolish the building. Once demolished, it was no longer possible for my client to proceed under the issued ALT alteration permit. It was required that he submit a new ERT application to erect an entirely new dwelling building, which resulted in the present zoning refusal letter. Under this appeal for essentially the same building, there are two additional violations for which relief was not granted in 2020. One owes to the fact that the number of off-street parking spaces was reduced from six to five, as currently proposed. However, I point out that the number of dwelling units has also been reduced from six to five. There is also a new violation for insufficient rear yard setback, but the rear yard setback here is the same as originally proposed and approved. There is a small increase in building height from 40 feet and 1 inch to 42 feet and 6 inches, but a height variance was previously granted. With respect to the units, Unit 1 will be a bi-level three-bedroom unit of approximately 2,095 square feet. Unit 2, a 1,395 square foot three-bedroom. Unit 3, a three-bedroom, 1,420 square feet. Unit 4, at 1,710 square feet and two bedrooms. And Unit 5, at 1,720 square feet and two bedrooms. So this is essentially the same project as previously approved by the board, except with five units and five parking spaces rather than six, and in the form now of an ERT application rather than an ALT application, as was the case in October of 2020. With that, Madam Chair, I'll pause and take any questions that board members may have.
Is there any living space in the basement?
Yes, there is, as there was previously, Madam Chair. No bedrooms. It is part of the bi-level Unit 1, and the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement is nine feet.
Okay. And are those head houses or what is on the top floor?
That is a partial fourth story. Again, exactly as was originally proposed and approved. There is an office up there for the top two-floor units. I'm sorry, the two top-floor units with flyer walking out to a small deck onto each of those units, again, as was the case when this was originally approved.
Any questions from the board?
I had a question. I noted the location of the trash on the left side of the building, but I think there's only a three-foot wide side setback from that property line. Can you explain how that will work? And, you know, whether that will, you know, kind of create a condition where there's not enough room to sort of navigate the trash and stuff?
It is proposed as a three-foot wide clear, which, you know, I guess is planned as being wide enough in order to move the trash receptacles out to the street. I suppose that an adjustment could be made if there were, if this were to be approved and if the BPDA were to engage in design review and perhaps want to set, have an additional area setback there. Again, it is proposed as a three-foot wide setback area, though.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, with that, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. During the first proposal for this project, a butters meeting was held back in August of, last August, excuse me. A handful of butters were present, and the meeting was mostly positive, with some concerns raised regarding rodent activity in the neighborhood. They went on to present with the Dorchester Heights Civic Group and received positive reception. After their deferral and their changes to plans, we had them flyer the neighborhood and go back to that civic association. Only two butters reached out regarding the flyer, and the proponent was able to answer their questions. The proponent went back to the civic and answered their questions there as well. With that, we refer to the judgment of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Good afternoon, Madam chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The council is not necessarily opposed to the project, but wanted to highlight the quality of life concerns that remain for neighbors and abutters when it comes to abutters on this project. At one point, it was understood that the project included five units and 10 parking spaces using a stack system. However, the stackers were removed, resulting in five units and five parking spots. Council President Flynn is respectfully requesting the city and developer work closely together to address this parking and quality of life issues for the neighbors. Thank you.
Okay. Ellen McGonigal, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Ellen McGonigal, 170 Dorchester Street, South Boston. I am in a butter. It has been a nuisance every time. Somebody just said something about flyers were supposed to be given out. There was no flyers given out. He still, he actually put in a foundation since he was shut down, the traffic. He went from, he told us 10 to 12 parking spots, now he's down to five. And the work that he's been doing on it, literally, there's been trucks double parked in front of my house, completely blocking Mercer Street. No people on Mercer Street can get off the street. The trucks are coming the opposite way. It's just a nuisance, and nothing is being done.
Thanks. I have no additional raise stands.
Madam Chair, we do have letters of support and, as you heard, opposition. We also have what is an approval from an operational perspective from BTD Robb Demick.
Regarding the five parking spaces, correct?
This is just from the op.
Okay.
It doesn't state those specifically.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
And Madam Chair, with no questions from the board, if that's the case, this is George Maranti. On the issue of parking, the parking, number of parking spaces was reduced. I believe whether it's actually in the BPDA's current formal recommendation or not, the BPDA had objected, I believe, to the stacked parking system, the number of spaces, which is the impetus for my client reducing it to five surface parking spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Maranti. You're correct. The BPDA only has an old recommendation based on your former 10 parking spaces. So with that, may I have a motion? Can I have a motion, or are there additional questions?
I think what's not clear to me is what's been presented, even though we're back to the parking question. We're not clear what's been presented and what we have here in front of us for a five accessory, but it seems to be there's some question around what has actually been represented recently? Is that what I'm hearing?
No, I think, I think what I'm seeing from BPDA's recommendation is they base their recommendation on the prior version of this, which it sounds to me, Mr. Maranti, that you have updated since then, which is in the public record here as what you're requesting relief from, correct?
Correct. And the five parking spaces was the condition when, as the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services Representative, Mr. Newman, mentioned the second round of community presentation. So the first proposal that went out was based on the parking stacking system with more parking in response to the BPDA's concerns. That was eliminated, reduced to five, and my client went back out through community process, went back to the Dorchester Heights Association, as Mr. Newman detailed.
Thank you. Make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
May I, I'll second that, but I'd like to specifically add the design review for the head houses. It looks like those were not, or some, they're remaining in some capacity from the previous iteration, which they were previously recommended to eliminate.
Those, actually, they're not head houses. It is a partial fourth story, and that was how it was approved originally in October of 2020. So they are not head houses. They're actually just partial and setback fourth story.
He answered that already. But I think design review will cover any particular issues. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we apologize. My computer had issues on Sawyer Street.
Oh.
John Pugini, sorry about that.
Okay, let's back up to Sawyer.
That would be case BOA 1394043, the address of 8 Sawyer Street, eight, forgive me, 8 Sawyer Avenue. And we have the applicant, Representative President.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of Martin Kerr. And with us this afternoon is also James Christopher from 686 Architects. This is 8 Sawyer Avenue. This is unique because it's both in the 2F 5,000 as well as 3F 5,000 zoning sub-districts, and is 9,946 square foot lot. The proposal is to build a three-story, five-unit residential building with six rear surface parking spaces. The project would be approximately 8,200 square feet. Right currently, there is a single family on the property that would obviously turn this into a multifamily residential building. As far as violations, we have a use violation because of the multifamily residential, FAR 25 is allowed, we're at point eight two. Building height, it's two and a half stories, we're at three. Front yard setback, fifteen, we're at ten. Rear yard, twenty-four and a half. And parking, one point two five, and we're at one point two. The unit sizes are, Unit One is a two-bed, two-bath. That is in the basement on the first floor. There are no bedrooms in the basement. Unit Two, again, basement and first floor, no bedrooms, family room in the basement. Unit Three is on the second floor. Unit Four is on the second floor, and Unit Five is on the third floor. It's a little bit of a history I want to give on this. Back in 2015, this proposal came before the Board at that time, and it was approved for four units by the ZBA. However, when the ZBA decision was issued, they had approved it for six units. And he went back, they had it corrected, went to the BPDA through design review, and the BPDA suggested that they incorporate a pitch roof to the project and add another unit to make it five units. At that time, Mr. Kerr went back out to the community, went to the Jones Hills Civic Association, and they were in unanimous support again. However, he had a tenant in the property at that time who had a disabled child, and he just said, this is not the right time to go ahead and develop this. So until those people moved out, then he pursued it again. So the proposal for you today is for five units with six rear parking spaces, and we have a lot of support, as well as the Jones Hills Association unanimous support, which I believe the Board has that letter. But we'd appreciate any questions or anything that you guys have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, let's proceed to public testimony.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ashley Holmes from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Some background information from Jones Hills Civic Association, full support of the Butters of that neighborhood. You're welcome to the Board, Mr. Turner.
Thank you. Counselor Baker.
Madam, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Julie Ryan from Counsel Frank Baker's office. Our office would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Go to attendees. It was just a raised hand that went down. Counselor Murphy's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Tom Manion of Counsel Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Counsel Murphy would like to go in support of this project. Thank you.
No additional raise hands.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Paul Sullivan to the Counsel Large Michael Flaherty. Constable in support.
Do we have a raised hand with McCarney? Can you state your name and address for the record, please, and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Sure. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. I fully support this project. I, sorry, my name, Marta Carney, I'm sick today. 2547, Hawaii, lifelong resident, member of 270 Civic, E-Board planning, all that stuff, but very supportive of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional raise hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Have a second, maybe?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, we will go to the first hearing in the 1:00 PM timeframe, that being case BOA 1424202, the address of 208 to 218 Columbia Road. This is the applicant or Representative President?
Yes, I am. Ivan Payam.
Yes, can you let us know what you're proposing?
Okay, we're proposing the channel of occupancy to the building. We did rebuild since 2018, and it proposes to change our occupancy from the liquor store, from the retail store to liquor store, and, and corner lot, it used to be a laundromat. We proposing the change to do a bakery now. We opened the building and the barber shop and the other locations.
Basically, the two changes of uses is to a liquor store and a bakery?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes to the exterior?
No, we already went to the city and did nothing going to change to the exterior of the building.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Okay, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of this Board. The applicant went through the community process with no concerns from what we understand and received support from the Jones Hill Civic Association. With that, we defer to the Board. Thank you.
Counselor Malo's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Good evening, rather, members of the Board. My name is Ayomi Deomulua from the Office of Counsel Woro, the applicant for 208 to 218 Columbia Road, having received letters of support from the project right. The Counsel would like to go on record in support of the proposal.
Thank you. Counselor Mahia?
Good afternoon, members of the Board. I am Counselor-at-Large Julia Mahia. I just want to go on the record in support for Mr. Ivan Pampas and with this particular endeavor. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the Board. Paul Sullivan to the Counsel Large Michael Flaherty. Constable in support.
Thank you. Any other raise hands?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Tom Manion, Counsel Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Counsel Murphy would like to go in support. Thank you.
No additional raise hands. With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Have a second?
Take one.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1399702, the address being 47 Dale Street. Is the applicant or Representative President?
Robert Nichols here. The owner of the property was having some technical difficulties, but I'll be here to speak on his behalf on the project. I'm the contractor that filed for the permit.
Okay, great. Can you let us walk us through?
Sure, sure. So essentially, the applicant applied for an ADU unit initially, and in order to really make the space functional with the existing two-family, he's looking to add a third unit in the attic space. And in order for it to be functional, he needed to dormer out both sides on the top floor to accommodate a one-bedroom apartment at the top of the building there. And then he's also going to be adding a second means of egress off the rear of the property and extending the stairwell up to the top and installing a sprinkler system for the additional unit as well.
So can you confirm if this is an ADU unit?
So that was the initial plan when we, when we applied. And if you look at the refusal letter, we're still going under the ADU guidance on this, but we're just looking to get those dormers approved. So that's specific, this case is specific to the dormers.
Understood, but ADU units are for owner occupants, so I just want to confirm that's the case.
That is the case.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony? Jessica, are there any raise hands?
Yep, we have Lorraine Wheeler. Do we have any owners? I don't know if they've given testimony. If not, we could go right to Lorraine.
Sure.
This applicant is in a lot of support from the neighbors who live around her. And so I'm actually attending this meeting to represent City Counselor Tanya Fernandez Anderson. And so the counselor would like to go on record as supporting this project, but the neighbors stressed that they don't have enough parking in that neighborhood, that it's really a struggle for them. And they want to make sure that the owner is using both this lot that he owns and the lot next door that he also owns. He answered their questions by saying that they would be able to, anyone in the building would be able to park on either one of those lots. And so, but we didn't really see a plan for parking. It's an existing building. So the counselor is in support, but again, the question is about.
Thank you. I have no additional raise hands. Would the proponent like to just respond to that parking question before we vote?
Yes, so the owner, as I had spoken with him, said that he would happily accommodate by allowing his tenants and himself to park on that lot. I think, yes, it just has to get the approvals for that, but that is something that he will be pursuing if he is able to get this unit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I also have testimony. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Keisha Santana, with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a Butters meeting was held on December 7th, where Butters attending and addressed the same concerns regarding parking, but no other additional concerns were brought to our office, and at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the Board.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The Chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1426452 with the address of 68 Terrace Street. This proposal has gone through Article ADU review. Is the applicant or the Representative President?
I am here. Hello, members of the Board. Madam Chair, this is Mike Ross. Good afternoon to you. I'm the attorney on this project from Prince Lobel, One International Place. I'm joined here today by architect David Lee and also the building principal, Matt O'Hara of Belrose Terrace. Now, what you're seeing here is 68 Terrace Street. This is previously known as 68-72 Terrace. It's within the local industrial section along Terrace Street in the Mission Hill sub-district. It's a 14,678 square foot lot. You can see there that it's right along the MBTA rail. It's between Jackson and Roxbury Crossing, so a kind of true transit-oriented development. The goal here is to, and there are currently two existing structures on the site, two small homes, total of four units, that are currently vacant, that will be demolished in order to make way for a five- and six-story building that will include 47 units, 15 parking spaces, and 47 bicycle units. This was approved by the BPDA under Article 80 Small Project Review on June 16th, 2022. And what you see here is one of the existing structures on the upper left in the green, and then in the lower right in the gray. Those are the current structures on the almost 15,000 square foot lot. On the upper right, you see this brick building. This is an example of some of the new construction that's taking place on Terrace Street in Mission Hill. This building is about the same size as our building, and it's to our immediate right. We'll show you more of that in a second. Next slide, next slide, please. We can come, I'll do the zoning right at the end, just after I kind of orient you into the project. And this is just the existing survey, and the next slide will show you the proposed, with the, you know, the building roughed out on the, on the survey. And the next slide will show you really the floor plan or the site plan, if you will. So what you're looking at here is Terrace Street is at the bottom now of your screen, and in the back, the red hashed area, that is part of the property, it's part of the project, but it's also an easement that goes to the MBTA. So, and then just further beyond that, you can see the topography start to slope down, and then ultimately, you get to the right-of-way, the orange line. So the hashed area, this MBTA easement, everything there is on the ground floor, on ground level. There's no actual structure there. The only thing that is there is the return drive aisle from the driveway coming in, which is also at level. And then air rights, we would have a couple balconies over that. Nothing would be built on that. So that also provides like a nice rear setback for us as well. The next slide, I can show you the, yep, so what we have is we're proposing 15 parking spaces. Again, this is a homeownership project, 47 bicycle spaces. Next slide would be fine. So now, these are just the floor plans, right? So there's, this is your ground level floor plan, which will begin four levels of housing. You could, you can scan through nine, 10, 11, and 12 slides as we build up. And what you have for breakdown of units here is there are three studios averaging around 450 square feet. There are 11 one-bedrooms averaging around 656 square feet. There are 26 two-bedrooms averaging around 882 square feet, and there are seven three-bedrooms. And three of the units peek out into duplex units. So if you go to the next slide, you're going to see the tops of three units that feed back into the floor below on the fifth floor. So it's a six-floor project, you can say, but that's the only portion that is sixth floor. The left and right there are fifth floors. They're the roof of the fifth floor below it. And in the case of the left, that's an outdoor roof area. I just also wanted to mention there are seven IDP units associated with this project, which would create a 15% IDP affordability onto the project. Next slide, please. This is the roof roof, so the top of the sixth in the middle, the top of the fifth on the left and on the right. And you see there, again, some photovoltaic panels for solar energy that would be generated. And this particular project, and we have David online, he can talk to you about it if you're interested, is both lead gold, both lead gold and lead platinum certifiable. So there's a bunch of passive building techniques in this project, and a very environmentally efficient project. Next slide, please, I'll show you the elevations. So this is your front elevation. That main entrance is meant to kind of line right up with Allegheny Street. You have your balconies coming off, and you can see, you know, on the left uppermost side, you can see the roof deck. The entrance, you can see on the right for automobiles. And next slide, please, is the rear elevation, is what you'll be seeing from the MBTA right-of-way. You can see that sloping down for the entrance and then the return to get back into the, into the property, and then some open, open air at the, at the parking level, and then the building itself as it is on top. And next, next slide, please. These are just your side, your two side elevations. And then next slide, we'll show you the section slide. Might be even better to go to the next section. This here is, kind of gives a nice illustration. So here, Terrace Street's on a nice illustration. So here, Terrace Street's on your right. You can see that slope down towards the MBTA right-of-way off to the left. What you'll see is in the, so there's that, kind of that right behind the building itself. That's that MBTA easement I mentioned to you earlier. There's a, right now, an existing granite wall there, and that, that's in the red hash. That will be replaced with the structural foundation itself of the building. Next slide, please. We gave you a lot of sections. You can go to the next slide. And here you have your renderings. This is what it will look like when complete. There's that building on the right, that brick building I mentioned to you, to the right of us. There's actually an easement between our two buildings to access the MBTA. The next slide will show you the, from the back. See, the back of the building is fairly articulated as well. Just quickly on the zoning relief, I'll walk you through it. So we're being cited for off-street parking, where they would want a one-to-one ratio of parking. We have 15 parking spaces. Multifamily is a forbidden use in a local industrial sub-district, so we're cited for that. For the dimensional regulations, this is an area that allows for an FAR of two. We are at 3.32. This is an area that allows for a height of 40. We are at 63. And it's, a lot of this has to do with topography and budding up to the MBTA to justify the variances we're seeking here. We were cited for open space, but with the open deck above, I actually think we mean it, but we were cited for it. And then we were cited for existing building alignment conformity. There is no front yard requirement in this district, and so you look to either a zero front yard line or a building conformity alignment. But we pulled back just a little bit more, working with the BPDA and the community to allow for wider sidewalks. The sidewalks on Terrace Street are very thin, but now in this project, pulling it back allows for better access on the sidewalks, better street trees, and those types of things. I'll pause there, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Ross, I'm wondering, I see the trees that you are keeping in the background on the easement that MBTA is providing. And the question is, are you going to keep those trees, or is the MBTA requiring you to remove the trees? Because I hear that they are doing that in some other places along the orange line.
Yeah, it's an excellent question, Mr. Valencia, because it's, we're wondering the same. We are in discussions with the MBTA right now on that. And if you noticed, actually, in the plans, we actually showed you two different versions. We showed you one version that we kept the trees, and we showed you another version that had what we would do if we removed them. We'd put like a table, a little plaza area out there. We can go up there to show you for the ambassador. But the bottom line is, we need to get permission from the MBTA to see what they want to do back there, if they feel like they absolutely need access. Probably be our preference, it would be our preference to keep the trees. But if they require, if you go to the ambassador, I think it's like slide five or six, way back up, I'll show you really quickly here. There you go. So, yeah, so there's the one that we just said we're keeping the trees, and ideally would like to do that. And if the MBTA wants us to remove those trees, then the next slide shows you what we would do. We would create this kind of plaza area with movable tables and that kind of thing. And that would be, but it's, it's still being negotiated through the process with the MBTA.
Thank you. And I'm glad that Counselor Buck is here. Welcome, Counselor, because this is, I mean, many of the residents in this area have been trying to keep those trees just along the orange line, and the MBTA is saying different things to people. So just for this project and other projects nearby MBTA lines, I think the city should have or understand better what the MBTA wants to do with existing trees on the easements. But thank you. Let's just comment.
This is David Lee speaking, but our preference obviously would be to keep as many of the trees as we can, because this could be a very pleasant outdoor space for the residents of the building. So we'll be working closely with the MBTA as well as BPDA in order to make a nice sheltered place, because you got the orange line on the other side. It'd be nice to have just that visual barrier, well, acoustic barrier that the trees represent.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Could you repeat the number of affordable IDP units and what was the range of the AMI?
Yep, it's seven units, and they are at 15% for...
I think you mean 15% of your units, or do you mean 15% of the...
Of the total number, yeah, of the total number of units. And I'd like to give you the actual breakdown of that. I'm just pulling that up there. So the actual breakdown is we have, okay, so we have a, we have a two-bedroom at 875 square feet at 80%. We have a two at 853 square feet at 90%. We have a three at 1196 square feet at 100%. We have a one-bedroom at 658 square feet at 80%. We have a studio at 450 square feet at 80%. We have a one-bedroom at 656 square feet at 100%. And we have a two-bedroom at 885 square feet at 100%.
Very.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? With that, may I take public testimony?
Yes. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Maggie Van Scorp from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, our office would like to defer judgment to the board. This project went through thorough community process during the Article 80 review. And during this process, they met with Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services, who has offered a letter in strong support of this project. With that, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Counselor Buck?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the members of the board. It's great to see you today. I wanted to hop on, I'm not often on these, but I wanted to hop on, both to voice my support and also to give the board a little bit of context on Terrace Street. Terrace Street is a street that runs sort of along the side of Mission Hill, apologies, in my district. And it historically has been a light industrial street, which is why that, there's that aspect that Mr. Ross referred to. But it's sort of in a transformation into more of a mixed-use residential street. So, and that transformation has been happening by kind of parcel by parcel, a thing which, when I came in as a counselor, was quite frustrating to me, because I think it's exciting that there's an opportunity to put more housing so close to the T here and so close to such a wonderful neighborhood as Mission Hill. But at the same time, like, you know, really wanting it to have a kind of planning approach. We actually got the city to fund a Terrace Street transportation study, really looking at how we avoid the street being a cut-through, a kind of alternative for Columbus Avenue, and really transform it from a complete streets perspective to be a comfortable place for people to walk and, you know, really like have the kind of uses, because it's been historically a lot of car-related uses on the street and kind of the type of place that people are blasting through. And we really, we don't want that. The sidewalks are much too narrow. And so what I'm really encouraged by is, we've been asking each of the projects that are proposed on the street to commit to putting funding a dollar per foot into actually implementing the recommendations that come out of that ongoing transportation study. And so this project has done that. I'm also excited with this project about the fact that they actually worked with the BIFTIC and our new affirmatively furthering fair housing process at the BPDA level, and that's why you see 15% IDP here instead of the minimum 13% on-site. I probably don't have to tell you that Mission Hill is currently the lowest owner occupancy rate neighborhood in the city. It's actually edged out Alston. And so getting homeownership and then getting affordable homeownership is just super critical to the residents in Mission Hill. And so the Mission Hill NHS support letter was referenced. They've negotiated to make sure that, you know, these homeownership units are going to be held by longer-term residents. And again, I'm just really excited that we got a bit more units above that 13% threshold. There was also a reference Attorney Ross made to the, pulling the, on Terrace Street, these lots go right up to the line, but the problem is, is we've got a sidewalk right now today that is just way too narrow and is not going to accommodate the type of like neighborhood foot traffic that we are going to see and want to see on the street. So they worked with us at the number of the sort of smaller project proponents around here have to kind of pull their project back a little bit and create some more space to walk on the sidewalk. So this is a project that my office has really been actually quite involved in, more so than we necessarily usually would for a small project because of, because of the nature of the transformation on the street. And I'm really grateful for their receptivity. And, you know, I think that we're all swimming kind of in the same direction. I will say, I agree with you strongly, Gio, about the trees. And we continue to work with the MBTA as a major landowner in this area, just to make sure that the, you know, the transit can coexist with the transit-oriented development in ways that are good for people. So just really excited to be supporting this today, and thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you, Counselor Buck. Other raised hands, please?
Second. Do we have any of the elected officials? If not, I'll vote to James. James, you looking to give testimony here? So can you unmute yourself? Okay. Other than that, we have no additional raised hands.
There we go. How's that? Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and the board. I'm a butter up on the corner of Allegheny and Parker Street, and I'd like to speak in opposition to the scale of this project and this backdoor zoning that supposedly was covered in a PZAC, which we had in this neighborhood about 20 years ago, when we decided we wanted to keep the light industrial in hopes of attracting some sort of jobs or businesses to this neighborhood. That has evidently not come to pass, and now we're confronted with this proposal, along with, I believe it's five or six others along Terrace Street, that will effectively turn Terrace Street into a canyon at the...
Thank you. Have no additional raised hands. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, just to let you know, we did receive that letter that we referred to from the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing.
Yes, thank you. May I have a motion?
Also to approve the BPDA design review?
May I have a second?
Take it.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have two companion cases, case BOA 1420973, the address of 47 Mercer Street. Second, next case with that is BOA 1439569, the address of 284 to 290 East 8th Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
I am, and my attorney was going to present Dan McDevitt.
Is he a panelist, Jessica?
I believe he's raising his hand. Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Make your point, Stan. Go ahead.
Hi, this is attorney Yan McDevitt, 403 Victory Road in Quincy is my office address. These companion cases in South Boston arise out of an application for an alteration permit for 47 Mercer Street, which is owned by Kevin Scott. The original application that Kevin filed included in it a plan that had utilized square footage on the lot at 824, 284, 290 East 8th Street. A yard sale lot that Mr. Scott and his next-door neighbor acquired when they acquired these properties. That lot was originally sold by the city of Boston for purposes of space and off-street residential parking back in 2004. So at least with regard to the application for 47 Mercer Street, when it was realized that Kevin's alteration plan had the square footage from the 8th Street, he filed a revision, which is what you now have. There are two violations here, or the 700th Street. The first one is the rear yard. As you can see from looking at the plan, this is an odd-shaped lot, and the setbacks from the existing building to the rear lot line on the left side of the building is eight feet, and on the right side of the building is 12 feet. The rear yard setback in this particular zone, according to Table D of Article 68, is 20 feet. There is no work to be done that will come into the backyard. All of the work is being done inside the building, but we still have a rear yard violation. The other violation is the FAR. Table D of Article 68 allows for a 2.0 FAR, and the lot size is 888 square feet. So this would allow twice that amount, 1776 square feet of living space. The existing living space in the building is 1710 square feet, but the proposed work to the garden level would add 430 square feet, bringing the total to 2140. It's about a 20% increase in FAR. The additional space is in the, Mercer Street is a very, very steep hill, dropping down to where it gets close to East 8th Street. And the full foundation of this building is out of the ground, and it's walkout. So the proposal here is to add a small space in the garden level and move the kitchen down to the garden level. That would give him enough room to have a second bedroom in the first floor, a par. Those were the two violations for 47 Mercer Street. Now, in conjunction with 47 Mercer Street, we have an application for relief for 284, 290 East 8th Street, which I've spoken about. This is a yard sale lot. It was sold to Kevin's earlier owners of the property of Kevin and Patrick O'Grady, who was in a butter. The city sold this lot in May of 2004. It's in the deed, there are standard yard sale restrictions that recite that residential parking isn't allowed use of the land. What triggers this case is the application for the curb cut. When Kevin and his next-door neighbor, Patrick O'Grady, filed for the curb cut to create two parking spaces on this lot, the plans examiner looked at the drawings, and they came up with the two violations. The first violation is open space. Obviously, we're using this space for parking. Only, there's only 719 square feet in this particular lot. The second violation is side yard violation. Now, if you were to take a look at the width of the lot, it's 19.33 feet. The code requires five feet on each side for the open space, which if we can't get relief, then we can't get two parking spaces, all of which was the intended outcome that the city desired when they created the yard sale program and put these restrictions in the deed. So the purpose of the relief from the side yard and the open space, two parking spaces, when the deed to this parcel from the city was recorded, the grantees were considered and recorded as tenants in common. Now, tenants in common means that each person mentioned owns 50% of the whole. They don't own the left side or the right side. But when Mr. Scott went to the plan examiners and said, can we subdivide this lot, they said, no, we have to keep the ownership. So what we have here is a proposal, two parking spaces, one which will benefit Mr. O'Grady's building, and the other one will benefit Mr. Scott's building. There is a notation on the rejection letter about maneuverability. East 8th Street is a 50-foot-wide public way, of which it's 30... East 8th Street is a 50-foot-wide public way, of which it's 34 feet of street and eight-foot sidewalks on either side. The proposed curb cut is, would be 14 feet wide.
Thank you, Mr. McDevitt. May I ask, Mr. Stenbridge, do we have any letters from Bob D'Amico or BTD on this?
D'Amico says this address is okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. So first up, when 284-290 East 8th came before our office, we hosted in a Butters meeting on January 9th. Two Butters were present and they expressed support for the proposal. The applicant then went on to the Dorchester Heights Association. They received their support as well. Later, they reached out to our office regarding a proposal for 47 Mercer, which is the driveway. We had them, we had the applicant circulate a flyer to Butters and did not hear back from anyone. The applicant then was unable to meet with the Dorchester Heights group regarding the proposal for 47 Mercer. The, that's a particular civic association isn't going to meet until next week. So with that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, madam of the chair members of the board, and I call the law from Council President Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in support as the proposal will allow two cars to park there that would otherwise be on the street contributing to the neighborhood's existing parking crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan for City Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office, as well as recognizing the communal effort to enter drafting Article 68 and acknowledging that there are projects that do have merit, council would go on record and support those projects.
No additional raised hands. I see, Counselor Murphy.
Good afternoon, Tom Anian of Counselor Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Counselor Murphy would also like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, we do have letters of support for...
Thank you. Yes, may I have a motion?
Votes for approval.
May I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes.
Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1423542, address being 136 West 8th Street. The applicant or their representative available?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Smith.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good to see you again today. My name is Kyle Smith of Sotera Law. Business address of 359 Newbury Street in Boston's Back Bay.
Okay, second to last case.
So we'll try to be brief for you. In brief summary, this is the combination of two parcels of land, 134 and 136 West 8th Street. To give the board a little back context, because this does predate your involvements now as zoning board. We were heard before the prior board in July of 2022. The proposal was for a structure of very similar physical dimensions, but we did propose on your screen now, where you kind of see the three spaces to the left and to the rear, we had a proposal for an ADA accessible unit at grade for five total units. We had a truncated board, and in light of a motion to approve, we had four votes to two in a motion to approve before the prior ZBA board. The BPDA did opine at that meeting that our height was accessible, we're an MFR sub-district, but in the fact that we are in a coastal flood resilience overlay district, they took note to our exception to our calling for livable square footage on the first floor. We had further communications with BPDA following that ZBA meeting in July. We have updated our plans, represented to ISD, seeking to reduce the number of units in our structure from five to four. No current livable square footage proposed at grade. So we are calling for now four units of, four dwelling units on floors two through four. These plans have been represented to BPDA, and I'll certainly let the BPDA opine directly on updates, but we believe we have their updated blessing. So again, the synopsis of what is before you is four stories, five off-street parking spaces, four total dwelling units on combined floors two through four. One note is that we had in removal of our ADA unit, we did have to make floor, at least floors two, for two units accessible. So there is a limited use, limited access lift to help make units, the two units on floor two ADA accessible.
Is Mr. Hampton on by chance? Okay, it doesn't sound like it. So I do want to point out that in their recommendation, they commented about potentially reducing parking spaces to address maneuverability. Was this brought up and can you address that?
Yes, well, we have been walking the fine dynamic of the city and local stakeholders wanting more parking. The BPDA has previously opined at our last ZBA hearing that they wanted to see less. So we had four proposal, four proposed parking spaces for our last iteration in the complete removal of all of our livable square footage on the first level. We have more than enough room for parking in comparison to what we used to have. So the current proposal is for five total spaces.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. The applicants met with us and we held a Butters meeting in January where Butters that were in attendance were supportive of this proposal. They've also been in communication with the local civic group and have had constructive conversations with them. With that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, madam of the chair members of the board, and I call the law from Council President Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in support based on our good community process and good faith compromises with neighbors and the civic group, such as removing a roof deck from the proposal. The proponent has since reduced the unit count and the project now extends to be four units with five parking spaces. The council respectfully requests BPDA design review with respect to the front decks and also asks that the team continue to work closely with the neighbors on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carteron.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan for City Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty. Echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn's office. Council would go on record and support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have letters of support on hand.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. The motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Next and last on the list is case BOA 1419028. The address of 65 to 85 Nealon Street. Is the applicant or their representative available?
Yes, this is, hi, this is Rebecca Lee. I'm a real estate attorney with Minz One Financial Center, Boston. We represent Boston Specialties, Dr. John Leung, who is seeking a conditional use permit to move his practice from a Harrison Avenue building in Chinatown to the building known as 6585 Nealon Street, or usually known as 75 Nealon Street in Chinatown. This is a mixed-use building with other medical and institutional facilities in it. The only reason this requires a conditional use permit is that the office is designed to accommodate a range of activities like allergy testing, allergy, other procedures. And so it's approximately over 6,000 square feet and it requires a conditional use permit. Otherwise, the use itself is consonant with other uses, both within this building and in the area, will not have any adverse impacts outside the space, which is a ground floor space on the corner of Nealon and Hudson Street. I know this is your last hearing. We have letters of support with our application. We're happy to answer any questions you may have, but I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Fairly straightforward. Any questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have public testimony?
And no, and, excuse me, Madam Chair, but yes, we do have, we have letters of support on hand.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board, understanding there is community support. CNC and CRA have both indicated their support for this proposal. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, madam of the chair members of the board, and I call the law from Council President Flynn's office. The council would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Paul Sullivan for City Council, Lodge Michael Flaherty. Council would go on record and support.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Anian, Counselor Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Counselor Murphy would like to go on support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor press with the Carpenters Union would like to go on record and support.
No additional raised hands. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion, no proof.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwol?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck. And I guess the saves, this is to make up for last time, so good job, guys.
Thank you.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you, folks.